Let's go. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the March 2nd, 2022, 2022, I'm sorry, business meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. This time we ask Ms. La Magna to please review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. All of the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings and citizens may speak at the designated time. And resolutions under administrative items number 10 are open for public comment and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach a lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The three minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 12 is the public comment form. And this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not on the agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach a lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordinances reads as follows. It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission or any committee, agency, or board thereof, where to cause any unnecessary disturbances thereon by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting or to refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either after election or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner May. Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Commissioner Henry. Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Traeger.
Here.
Commissioner Strickland. Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here.
Okay. We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the February 2nd, 2022 regular city commission meeting.
So moved.
All right, we've got a motion. We'll take it from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. This time we will have our agenda approval. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, there is an addition for item number AP, Amending Major Event Report to the Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda with the state changes.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay. All right, we have no presentations this evening, so we'll move on to item number seven. Public comments by people addressing the city commission. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item that's on the consent agenda. And I have two speakers. My first speaker is John Nicholson and on deck is Frederick Brown.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue. Thank you for the vote. Things I didn't get to say is, one, you were buying six properties at that location. There are four buildings and two parking lots. There was a building down the street, Neptune's, sold for almost a million dollars. Parking lot, half a million. So you got basically $6 million for 3 million. All right, so when the 7.7 really is a realistic figure. Secondly, the Ocean Center. It literally faces the back of that building. It's all glass for almost 900 feet, almost two city blocks. It's all glass. And all their little offices or meeting rooms all face that building. So it couldn't be better for you if you put something there for them to eat. They need someplace to go and it'd be right in front of their face. Yearly funds, if, if you're worried about what, who's going to pay for upkeep and whatnot, it makes a ton of money. The city at one time rented the parking lots from Corbin and we got money from, we had to pay them and we made money off of it. There are also vendors on the front and the back for Bike Week and Biketoberfest. So even if nothing else is done, your butt is covered, it's paid for and it pays for itself. Next thing is D with regard to the elections. We're the only city that is not going to rezone before the election. Every city, every county, every state, I think in the United States, has rezoned. The question is why? And I never understood when the mayor said, oh, well, we can't. There are people that couldn't get to the location, couldn't understand where to go or whatever. The election locations don't change. Just the people themselves who are running for office change. They're still going to go to the Snabbity Center to vote. The voting locations will not change, only the people running. So the question is, why do we want to keep the zones that we have for the elections coming up? Because whoever gets put in there, some of them will be there for four years and up to 20,000 people are going to be out of zone. You deliberately will have 20% of the city not in their zone for four years. Because, why, there's 3,000 people that have to be added to yours, Ken, 3,000 people have to be added to yours. Seven, eight, 10,000 have to be dropped from yours. This is 2020 zone. Now it's 2022. Okay? Those houses, we just went through a thing downstairs. How many thousands of people have moved in since this census? You could be three or four or five or 6,000 people. You are.
All right, all right, your time is up. I don't appreciate you twice tonight saying that, one, I said something that I didn't say. I didn't say whatever that was you said. And the second thing was, as it related to me ruining Main Street. I hope not to ruin Main Street, but you're entitled to that opinion. But this one, you just stated, false.
Actually, it was me that said it because I'd like to give my residents more time to.
Ah, you said it, it's a lie.
Whenever you're ready.
Yes, Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge. Once again, I'm going to speak for, and Mr. Mayor, I love it when you say that word, opportunity. But here we got opportunities missed. We're spending copious amounts of money on ICE vehicles and internal combustion engine instead of more modern equipment. We need to get, break the cycle. We need to start planning to be the city of the future. I know we've talked about this. I know it's in the back of your minds, but one of the problems that's held Daytona back on a lot of these things is we tend to drag our feet. And that doesn't, I gotta agree, it does include zoning. We gotta stop dragging our feet if we want to be the city of the future. You know, we need to get it in gear. We need to stop finding excuses to not have things get done and have things get done. That's how Elon Musk has been extremely successful in what he has done in his biz. He just got it done, saw the opportunities and worked through them. So again, on items A and B, we are missing an opportunity. I wish the city would get a more proactive alternative energy plan in place. We've already talked about property acquisition. There are so many opportunities. And as John said, there are a lot of opportunities to make money in it. We do need to fast track some of this stuff, though. We seem to spend endless time in studies, engineering studies, diagrams, let's look at it again, oh, let's try this. We need to get a well thought out, comprehensive plan and get it in gear and get it going. Because, you know, as was pointed out, when these properties sit idle and they're not making money, not only they're an ISOer, but they're costing the city. Okay, the other thing is, the whole concept is to bring people in. The faster you do that, the better it is for everybody. We raise all boats with a high tide here. So again, we need to get this, get this going in gear. There's several other things I'd like to talk about, but my, of course, as usual, my time is very limited here. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about, item 8K. Pages here. And that is the road paving. One thing, hopefully you're all aware of the Florida Green Book, which is the guidelines to how city streets are paved. And I know this is based on a contract, but I'm also going to talk about experiences in my own neighborhood. Many of the roads have been paved too narrow. There's an effort to trip over dollars to pick up pennies and it's costless. The road within the Florida Green Book that is supposed to be the guideline for all the paving is a 12-foot lane. That's what the budget calls for. It's all based on 12-foot lanes. Okay, I'm seeing 10-foot and some places even less. In the Florida Green Book, it says the minimum is 10. And of course, now we're talking about this development area. And as was pointed out, there are many narrow streets and streets closed off. And now what you're doing is force some more traffic down narrow streets. We already have a lot of that on beachside. We got to, in this gridlock, we got to have good streets with proper width so people can drive and park and walk on the sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was my final speaker for the consent agenda. And before we vote on the consent agenda, I have a Form 8B memorandum of a voting conflict from Commissioner Strickland for item 8I. And he's gonna.
My stepdaughter and her husband are both employed by that company, so I'm not a, I'm a neutral vote on 8I.
Okay.
So the vote will reflect that Commissioner Strickland is not voting for 8I, but an affirmative vote on the remainder of the consent agenda. Mayor, there's one more point I'd like to make. With regard to the add-on, I want to make sure the public is fully aware of what that item was. That was to add Jeep Beach to the declared special events proclamation that you make. That's something that was discussed at last meeting. It relates to your amendment to the extended hours permit for alcoholic establishments. So I wanted to make sure the public was aware of that in case that prompted anyone to speak as to that item.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, and we have a, do we have a motion?
We do not.
And Mayor, if I may, was, did that prompt anyone to speak? I wanted to ask if anyone wanted to speak to that item, given the additional information. All right, so apparently not, very good, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion, I have a second from Commissioner Reed, and we have documented paperwork. Are, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are in opposition, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
For the record, 6-0 on 8I.
Okay.
Okay. We are gonna move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item 9A is the Development Services Amending Code of Ordinances Bar Closing Times. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance amending Section 10-3 of the City Code regarding extended hours permits for establishments dealing in alcoholic beverages by changing the required closing time for establishments holding extended hours permits from 3:00 AM to 2:00 AM, subject to exceptions on certain days, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
Have a motion, we have a second. We have speakers?
Yes, we have a numbers of speakers. Our first speaker is Stephen Barnes and on deck is Randall Phillips.
Stephen Barnes, 701 North Wild Olive. That's on the corner of Wild Olive and Grand Glen View. That's a block from Seabreeze and I've lived there for 22 years. And I've seen the slow, slow decline of Seabreeze in those 22 years. I've seen group fights at 3:00 in the morning, running up and down Wild Olive. I've seen countless car wrecks into the traffic calming island in front of my house. My fence has been run into five times. Four of them was at three, past 3:00 in the morning. I've repaired it myself as best I could, but it's still an eye distraction. I've seen half a dozen. At one time, I got out, I owned a bar. When I got out of the Marine Corps, I bought a bar. I thought it was a good idea. And at that time, I had the option to buy extended closing time, which I did. And I saw firsthand that people make a lot more bad decisions late at night. That last hour, I saw like a 90% increase in bad decisions. And I'm asking the commissioners tonight to vote to close the bars at 2:00 because if I was running this ship, I'd be closing the place at 12:30.
You might not want to say that, that's not the road we're going down.
Our next speaker is Randall Phillips and on deck is Ferd Neves.
Mayor, Commission? My name is Randall Phillips. I reside at 1505 Crescent Ridge Road. And I'd like to say earlier, I'm a 46-year resident in this town, so millennials are now welcome. But Commission, back in that day, did keep me around, so I'm a lifelong resident. And I do own a bar at 612 Eastern National Speedway. It's been about 22 years now. Mr. Mayor, you are my history teacher.
I'm a student.
Yeah. You're my history and my, yeah, American government. I think you're my coach, too. I'm going against the saying of the bar closure. I mean, it's, this is, I think, the, probably third time I've been up on this podium talking against this. You're going to affect a lot of families. I mean, me as a business owner, yeah, I can, I can probably, an hour doesn't matter much. But you have a lot of families, a lot of bartenders, a lot of servers that do depend on that one hour. And it's not just the fact that it's from 2:00 to 3:00. A lot of these people are coming in the evening time, they start a certain staff or shift and they have to, they have to have that extra hour to bring in that $100 to pay a power bill or a utility bill or help pay for rent. As you were saying about the extended hours operation, take it away from those people that you think are problematic. The people on Seabreeze, I do personally, I think it's disgusting. I hate to go down to Seabreeze. It's a fistfight or something, somebody breaking into a car or it's, it's very problematic. Doing it an hour early, I think personally is just going to bring it towards 1:00 o'clock. I think you're going to see a lot of these problems go from 2:30 to 3:00, going to 1:30 to 2:00. It's not going to solve the problem. The problem is finding those problematic establishments revoke their occupational, or not occupational permit, but the extended hours permit. So they do have to close at midnight. And I think to see from there, from that process, you'll be able to see who they are and cause the, or solve the cause of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ferd Neves and on deck is Carrie Marsh. Is he here? Our next speaker is Carrie Marsh and on deck is Emily Nice.
Hi, I'm Carrie Marsh. I live at 510 Jessamine Boulevard. And I very much want you to vote yes on this. The noise from Seabreeze, I live three blocks away and I can still hear it in my house. It's constant on the weekends. And my, I have a 96-year-old house with the original windows in it and they, they rattle, you know, when they have the live bands out there. And I would very much like for you to close, have them close at 2:00 AM because nothing good happens past 2:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emily Nice and on deck is Suzanne Odina.
Good evening, everyone. One of the most enjoyable meetings I've attended occurred last December when the Frameworks Group proposed the apartment complex on North Beach Street. I heard a desire for a better business community with many people, including many of you commissioners, fondly reminiscing about the walkability of the area. Seabreeze was once that way, too. As co-chair of the Seabreeze Neighborhood Watch, I'd like to tell you a little bit about the community of residents who would also welcome and enjoy a thriving and safe Seabreeze business community. Our area encompasses about 600 buildings in a nationally designated historic district with the majority of those being single-family residential dwellings built from 1898 to 1947, many now beautifully restored. We're not newcomers. We're people who have lived here and contributed to this city and have seen the immense decline. 98% of us on poll have a fear of crime based on the statistics that are very real. Yet, our police department remains understaffed and exposed to this additional hour. Code enforcement has worked for almost a year to clean up the back alleys that look like a third world country. There's improvements, but there's still a long way to go. Public Works Pressure Washes Seabreeze once a week has hired two pressure washing crews. And at the end of the week, it still looks filthy. They also have litter pickup crews now that are trying to keep up because as you go down Seabreeze and Oak Ridge, you still see litter. I've gone out to these areas at 3:00 and 4:00 and 5:00 and 6:00 in the morning and there are crowds hanging around. I could see where the trash comes from. It looks dangerous. It's not appealing. For decades, Seabreeze residents have tried to hold on to the ambiance and safety but are now beyond discouraged by the ongoing and out of control violence and crime that not only hurts our neighborhood, but our entire city's reputation. We are not seeking punitive damages here, just a return to basic start of a community measures for everyone, visitors, businesses, investors, and residents. Our recent poll showed 98, 96% of us voted in favor of earlier bar closings. Every, thank you for that hour.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Odina and on deck is Jean Scheckin.
Thank you. I'm Suzanne Odina. I live at 716 North Wild Olive. And I've talked with many of you, I'm sure all of you, about the thrilling times that we've had living on North Wild Olive. We've seen fights at our corner, fights in Steve's very front yard. On Friday, I had noise that was louder than my television at 12:30 in the morning. I texted poor Ken probably five times. The mayor and I have talked. He asked if I went down there so that I had know which, which place it was. You don't want me going down there. I guarantee you don't want me going down there and neither do my children. I think that we should have the same closing time all over the city. As I've said before, we're a tourist town. I would be happy to have them open 24 hours a day if they were good neighbors. But right now, I would like you to please vote to turn it back to 2:00 o'clock for our area, just like it is for the rest of the county. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, our next speaker is Jean Scheckin. And on deck is Jan Ramsdale.
Mayor, Commissioners, Sean Skehan. 932 North Peninsula. Yeah, it's an Irish name. It's difficult to pronounce at times. I just want to echo what I've heard already, what you've heard. I am completely in favor of changing the ordinance from 3:00 AM to 2:00 AM. My family first moved here in 1972 and the order that was on Seabreeze at that time, it was a beautiful place to stand, to walk, to eat. Small restaurants, Chez Boucher, which historically was a, a well-known French restaurant. The Silver Bucket, which was a classic old wooden building that was there on Seabreeze. All of these places have gone and now it's just the late night element that has rolled in. And given the, the efforts of the city over the years since the 70s, since the, the beach mayhem that has taken place with, with college students, that has gone away. But the element has taken place and resurfaced on these late nights that everybody gets a chance to see, not just here in Daytona Beach, but on social media with YouTube, these micro videos that show up and the mayhem that does take place. Really, it can take place at any time, but an extra hour of fuel, if you will, that comes with the, the 3:00 AM closing is not necessary. And so I do favor the, the change in the time. And I certainly hope, as I know, most of the residents in the historic district feel that this change should take place. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jan Ramsdale and on deck, let it approach.
I'm Jan Ramsdale. I live at 825 North Wild Olive. And I am definitely in favor of changing the time to 2:00 AM instead of 3:00. I know that historically, bars, our bar is the one, our bars are the ones that stay open past 2:00. Everybody else closes at 3:00. So we get everybody that is, has more than enough to drink and they come to our bars to have more than enough to drink more. And so when they get here, we have all the mayhem that takes, takes place. I think also that, I believe there are dram laws here. Dram laws, I came from Ohio and Ohio had laws that if they find out, if somebody was in an accident after being at a bar and the bar owner, they were still serving them even though they knew they were past being drunk, then they are now responsible for that person because they served them knowingly. I believe Florida has that law, too. I don't think that the, the cities, the, the bars, people that own the bars, I can't believe that an hour is going to make a difference in what they make or how they can afford to live in wherever they live. I don't think the bar service people that are in there, I do not believe that they are waiting for that one hour. If they are, then the bar owner should be paying more for those people. So I don't think that anybody, even the bands, the bands don't want to play past 2:00 AM. Nobody listens, they're already totally trashed. They don't need to be there. So I am in favor of changing the rule, or the time back to 2:00 AM. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Linda Crochet and on deck is Brian Case.
Linda Crochet, I live at 701 North Wild Olive.
Bring your mic down a little bit.
There you go. And with the, on Seabreeze, with those bars being open, yes, that one more hour makes a big difference. People are coming from all over, already drunk and they're, they're all coming here slamming it at 2:00 in the morning. They're, it's overcrowded, there's, there's not enough room for even the bars to get in. That's when the fights start. And they come out on the street, they're already drunk and they're all from different neighborhoods. They're all from different lives. They're all out there and there's fights. That is, that is a fact that that is. With that being said, we keep saying, I hear bringing people in, making it nicer, bringing people in, making it family. All right, you got people, Seabreeze is a main street. It could be very nice, but people are terrified to go there and they have been told and it is a bad place for them. So with that bar being open till 3:00 and them being out in the streets fighting, you're talking bringing people in, bringing families in, but there you go, you're pushing them out. People don't want to be there over there by Seabreeze. Also, the noise, too. I do live one block off and yes, we have the old windows and I think they're going to break. So maybe, you know, 2:00 I could go to sleep. But like I said, to 3:00, they really are just coming for that one more hour and I don't believe it is going to save anybody's rent and I do not. I wait just for a long time and that one hour, that's all these people are here to drink, is way outweighing how much somebody would make. Everybody else is closes at 2:00 and they're all doing fine with their living. We are the only place that is open till 3:00, that brings the only place for everybody that comes, like I said, already drunk, to drink some more. This is where they come, they go out in the streets, the fights start. I don't believe that is an attraction that we want to put on Daytona to bring people. I don't believe that is an attraction that we want to put on Daytona to bring people. My son was here, he was only here a couple days, I mean, one day, and he said, you know, you live right by here, people don't even want to go down here. They told us, don't even go down like to Seabreeze, like it was like, you know, the shooting gallery. But he was worried for me because of how close I was, and this is what he got staying in a nice restaurant, staying in a nice hotel. This is what, stay away from Seabreeze. So it could be very, very nice. It could bring people and family people that, their kids and with them are not afraid to be around there. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brian Case, and on deck is Joyce Case.
Hi again, I'm Brian Case. I live at 942 North Wild Olive. My house was built by the Dobies, the Dobrow Company family that used to own the clothing store down on the corner of Speedway and Beach Street. I started coming to Daytona Beach for the Daytona 500 in 1998, and liked the place, and chose to move here three years later. Seabreeze has gone through some changes, but, you know, overall, it's a vibrant, it's a vibrant place. But we don't need to be open until 2:00. No bars do. Everybody will adjust. Most of us grew up probably elsewhere. Bars close at 2:00, you learn to adjust. So there's not going to be a hurt. As the last person mentioned, all the other cities have bars, and they're open, and they're doing fine. They're not shutting down, they're not crying because they don't have the money for that extra hour. What Jan was trying to say, her husband has been a guitar player in bands for 50 years, and what he has seen between 2:00 and 3:00, the bars are not full, not the majority of them. Can't say that for Razzles, that is a different animal. But I think this is a bigger issue, and to be isolated just on Seabreeze just misses the whole point, that, you know, we're trying to make the city grow up, get away from the, you know, the mentality of the special event, the, you know, all the other things. I mean, this city has a heck of a lot more going on for it than the oceanfront. You know, we've got the good universities, we've got very good factories in this county, in this city. But we don't need to be concentrating on being the party place. Everybody else who owns the bars generally doesn't live within our community, sort of like dogs, right? They go outside and do it elsewhere. So I'd like this city to pay attention and quit being, you know, the poorest place, the one with the lowest property values, the ones with the least opportunities, the ones with all the homeless, and not going to get rid of it by continuing with the same mentality, which is why I pointed out, I think I've got a good plan if we would just shift Bike Week and take control of it, move them out to our property. We control the itinerant vendors, we keep the money. That'll cause people to make change, a fundamental change, on Beach Street, on Main Street, on all of our areas. But it's just my humble opinion, I really love the city and hope that we can make a better decision than continuing to party as always.
Good job.
Our next speaker is Joyce Case, and on deck is Frederick Brown.
I'm Joyce Case. I live at 942 North Wild Olive, and it's been my home since 2001. And Seabreeze is one of, we've done this before. This is the second time we've tried to get the bars to close early. Third time, yeah, that's right, we did it third time. We just, I just participated in your meeting before where you approved the purchase of a $3.1 million building on the Corbin Building. And we talked about how we want to change Daytona Beach, how we want to be better, how we want to recruit families, and all this different groups of people to come in here and enjoy our lovely city. If we continue with these bars closing at 3:00 AM, have you seen what's on the internet? Have you seen the fights? Can we bring people, good businesses? Can we expect people to bring their, have their kids come and go to college here when they see this kind of stuff that's happening on the internet? It's frightening. It's really and truly frightening. I know that Emily sent you all an email about the fights, the YouTube fights. Have you not seen them? They're incredible. Between girls, between guys, between, in the street, our cops are chasing them down with taser guns. I mean, it is unbelievable and unbelievably safe, unsafe. So please, close the bars, please. Close them at midnight, probably be way better. Nothing happens good happens after midnight. Go to a hospital ER, see what happens. Seriously, close them, please. I beg you, for the third time. Right, Mayor? Thank you.
Good job, Ms. Joyce.
Our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Thank you. You might need me a shot of gin tonight. Unexpectedly truncated her speech. Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge. Yeah, and you wondered why the street was called Wild Olive. And I used to think it had something to do with the trees, but anyway, a couple of things I want to point out here. You know, I think about this a lot, and my neighbor, Randy, made some excellent points out here. I know when he comes home because he works at the bar, and my dog reminds me that he comes home very late. He works hard. You can't just cut off the lifeblood of some of these places. And I know, Mr. Mayor, you've said some elegant things before about if you can't get drunk enough by 2:00, then what's 3:00 going to do for you? And that's true to a point. But the thing is, Daytona has been a signature town for fun and partying to a point, okay? Again, this is where control is important. So I'm going to throw an out of the box type way of looking at this, okay? Because I keep hearing 2:00, 3:00, 2:03, 2:03. Why don't we implement this with two caveats? First of all, I'm thinking 2:30, which gives you an extra 30 minutes to kind of clean things up, but it makes Daytona bars stand out, okay? We are a little bit more than the other bars, because if all things are the same, oh, let's just go to the other guys. And I really want to see Daytona succeed, and that does include the nightlife here. I myself have gone down to Seabreeze many times for the music events that are down there. I felt perfectly safe. We do have a very good police department, but they also need help. As Commissioner May had pointed out, with the issues they have with the no-trash passing signage, and they have to come back twice and all that, I think that needs to be more closely looked at, and I think that needs to be implemented so that if we do have an issue, it can be quickly addressed, and that would help our police department as well. But the other thing in this I'd like to do is, let's do this time based on merit. If you're a responsible owner, okay, and if you do it the right way, and you don't have neighborhood problems, and you don't have drunks and fights and whatnot, and I have seen fights. By the way, don't believe everything you see on YouTube, okay? It's not always accurate. Don't believe everything you see on Google. But I have physically seen them, most of them involve people having trouble getting in and out of the area. And that's because, again, we don't have good public transportation, and if they're inebriated, I'd rather see them on public transportation than driving. But yeah, especially during the bike events, of course, not many of us want to see the truck events again, but, you know, on these events where the vehicles are in great numbers, it would be much better, again, tone this down with good transportation. But I would like to see, your time is based on merit. We've heard about the need to clean up the bars. That's true. So if you don't do proper code enforcement, then guess what? You don't get the extra hour. That right there is a carrot to help the bar owners clean up their program, okay? If they have issues, take it away. You only go to 2:00.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Kariaakas Drimonis.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue. I ran nightclubs for years, closed at 5:00 in the morning. You can look at the crowd and tell what time it is. Nobody arrives before 11:00. When you go out at night at 6:00, 7:00, and 8:00 o'clock, there's nobody there. It's just the way it is. We are a tourist town. When you look at the crime stats, they do our crime stats on 8 million people. No, they don't. They do our crime stats on 65,000. They don't include any tourists, nobody coming into town to work. They do the crime stats on little tiny towns out in the middle of nowhere. So it's only logical, when we do our crime stats, and there are eight major areas in this one location, all affects the crime stats. Peabody is there, the boardwalk is there, the pier is there, Seabreeze, all of these roads, all of these locations add to the crime stats. You would expect it to be there. The density, you would expect to be there. Now, throughout the city, 2:00, if you go to any, almost anywhere in the city, 2:00 is closed. Main Street is closed at 2:00. They don't have to have that. The only thing this affects is Seabreeze. And everybody's blaming the bars for what happened. Are you blaming the bars for Main Street? Go down Main Street, it's dead. Is it because the bars stayed open too late? No, we closed the beach approach. Ask anybody who's been in town what happened when they made Seabreeze one way. It killed Seabreeze, not the bars. It's they closed the ability to travel. Then they closed the ability to go into their neighborhood. All the people that are here live north. It's blocked off. My neighborhood's not. I've had four traffic accidents in front of my house. I've lived there 40 years, and within one year, I've had four accidents. It's because they redid Oak Ridge, and everybody had to pass in front of my house. Now that it's open, nothing's happening. Yes, there's a problem. I've talked to people that own bars. Where are the cops between 12:00 and 1:00? Between 12:00 and 3:00? We don't have police protection on Beachside. They all show up at 2:30, they block A1A, and there must be 10 cars when I was there. Every, for the last six months, I've been going Friday and Saturday nights. I've been walking. I don't see the trash. I don't hear the noise. All the complaints are not there. The crime is not there. Ask Campbell, ask some other people. Ask the, he goes there all the time, I don't want to use his name, but he goes to the bars. The kids go there because we're a tourist. The tourists are there. Don't kill it.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Kariaakas Drimonis, and on deck is Brian Mills.
Good evening, everybody. Kariaakas Drimonis, my family owns and operates the properties at 611 Seabreeze Boulevard and 555 Seabreeze Boulevard, also known as the Animal Razzles, I believe, somebody referred it to, but nah. Look, in my discussions with many of you, many of the residents, some city officials, city manager, I've come to the conclusion that, and it's painfully obvious, even because of the CRA meeting, that we have some growing pains here in this town. It's obvious that we do have some growing pains. And one of the issues that I've discussed with many of you is the law enforcement and the depletion of our law enforcement right now. We have a 15% manpower shortfall of law enforcement here in Daytona Beach right now. So it's relating to a problem. Bars are not able to get the police details that they are willing to pay for to have police officers down there, and it's not happening. So I've offered some suggestions to the city manager. He can elaborate. I don't have enough time to elaborate, unfortunately, on something like that because I really like to get some more of these points across. Secondly, there was a lot of discussion about a year-round economy here. That's exactly what Seabreeze has created. It's not a Main Street, it's not depending on two weeks out of a year. It's a year-round economy that service industry employees depend and rely on. And that should be applauded, not condemned, because that is what you want as a city. You want a year-round economy. There are growing pain problems that go along with that as well. We're simply rewarding the special event mentality by doing these cutouts for those events. I'll take them, that's great, but however, in the grand scheme of things, it's not where we should be as a city. Okay? A lot of what happens after 2:00 AM hurts our image, is what the mayor said, and that's very true. We don't want things on social media, but we also don't want the things that happen during the day, invasions that close our beaches or bridges, truck event, which we happen to get away from. These things are chaotic events. We do have some image issues across the board, but let's not take these reviews that I believe Jenny read to you, and these YouTube videos, and say this is the only thing that happens on Seabreeze. There are plenty of people that go there, have a good time, and enjoy themselves, and you don't even hear another word about it. There will be some unintended consequences by passing an earlier closing. You currently have bad operators that are camouflaging themselves as retail establishments and staying open until 4:00, 5:00 in the morning on Seabreeze right now. Future mayors can come along and say, hey, I think all of the summer can be a special event, and make it 3:00 AM. So I'm looking for that mayor right now. No offense, Mr. Mayor, but, and then finally, because I have 10 seconds, finally, I have 10 seconds. Residents and myself are not diametrically opposed here. We have the same interests. We want a safe place to eat, work, play. That is what we want for Daytona Beach, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Brian Mills, and on deck is Lauren Angelotti.
Name's Brian Mills, operate, owner operative of 509 Lounge down on 509 Seabreeze Boulevard. Like Kariaakas said, we're not against what the neighborhood is saying. We're right there with them. We go through the same things. It breaks my heart when I have a friend tell me that they don't feel safe to come down to my establishment, or that, you know, or that I have to have my staff members leave with a security escort at the end of the night because I don't feel safe for their safety leaving my premises, because we know that people, you know, that either haven't come onto our premises, or that came and left, they're still standing in the middle of the road. We do what we can. We've requested, I gave you an example, I would say probably out of the last 10 details I've requested over the weekends are probably got in three or four on Friday and Saturday night. And I will tell you, that makes a huge difference on how my night goes, on how we handle situations. You know, it goes as far as, you know, escorting a simple person out that's not even drunk, but just being combative, having officer there, it's time to go home. They go home. No officer there, now they're trying to be combative with my staff. Now, that's few and far between. That's a simple example of what goes on. I do appreciate the efforts you've made so far with the lighting. I see that we've made some efforts on redoing the roads right there on the way in, and redoing all the sidewalks. We definitely, that's seen, and that's appreciated, and that's what, that's a step to make, everything that much more beautiful and appreciated. We still do have some issues with the homelessness and stuff like that. I had to hire a cleaning crew to clean out in between our buildings because it was so bad, we had two liters of needles stuck in between there. So it's not just the bar, and it's not just the city, and it's not just the residents, it's a team effort, and I understand that. I refuse to point a finger at anybody's fault. We're in this together, and I think that the line of communication needs to be opened up. We've talked about it, we've met about it, but once we leave that meeting, nothing happens. Like I'm saying here tonight, I am here for that discussion. I'm open to suggestions, whether you pass this or not, there are still things that need to be addressed. Thank you for your time.
I agree with that.
Our next speaker is Lauren Angelotti.
Hi. I live on University Boulevard on Beachside. I didn't want to come up here, but I am. So I'm for closing the bars, and there's a lot of reasons.
Your name?
Oh, I'm Lauren Angelotti. I thought they already said it.
Yeah, you still have to say it.
Yeah. Anyhow, I'm for closing the bars. I've lived here maybe 10 years. I used to come as a vacationer in my home, and I rented it out, and I loved that. But I don't think there's anything that values our city, and I mean all the way up to Daytona 1, to anybody here. And I do hair for a living, so therefore I interview people all day long, and, you know, there's a lot of people that would be standing in here, but they just feel like their voice is never heard. And I know people emailed and said what they think. It's just time for us to think about, how can we change Daytona from, you know, 95 all the way to the coast, and just really bring in an upper-scale love environment for the Oyster Pub, or for, I'm not sure where that man's restaurant was, but I'm in agreement with it. I've had friends whose sons have passed away right there, you know, on Seabreeze to overdosing, you know, by a bad drug, and I don't think Daytona should be the place to have that. And so I'm for closing the bars because nothing happens good for any of these residents, or for any tourist, or any of the owners of the businesses after 2:00. It just, it hasn't done anything for our And so I'm for closing the bars because nothing happens good for any of these residents or for any tourist or any of the owners of the businesses after 2:00. It just, it hasn't done anything for our city. And so I'm in agreement with closing early for that reason, for all of us. And I'm speaking for a huge group of people, and I don't think they all want to come through the door. I ran here after work just so that I could say something out loud because everybody was telling me their opinion. And I said, if you would just go to these meetings, everybody would know. We want to close at 2:00. I don't even know why I'm here even saying, let's close at 2:00. It's one hour. It seems silly that we're having a discussion about it when there is no benefit. There's just no benefit in it. Simple. You know, that's how I would say 95% of the residents here in Volusia County feel. And so I'm here just saying I vote no. Thank you.
And I did have one speaker that signed up that didn't speak for none of us. I don't know if they're still here. Okay. And then, okay. And then, Mayor, you gave me to read this remark from Tracy Remark. Let's all remember, per city ordinance, bar-
Wait, you want to say her name again?
Tracy Remark?
She stated her address?
Yeah. 815 North Oleander.
Okay.
Let's all remember, per city ordinance, bar closing in Daytona is midnight. Anything later than that is called a privilege in the ordinance, one that the holder of the extended hours permit is told is that, in quotes, "that no establishment may reasonably rely on the continuation of that privilege," end quote. It's time to change the closing time of that privilege from 3:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. It's time to shut Daytona Beach down as a last call for all of Volusia County. It's time to quit thinking 30 years in the past of attracting more businesses because it's business that is shredding our reputation, overburdening our police, putting unsuspecting visitors at risk of life and limb, with late-night violence and negatively impacting the quality of life in our neighborhoods. It's time to put the entire city ahead of a few owners and their employees whom they could pay more substantial wage. It's time to quit using COVID as an excuse, especially given the fact that the COVID assistance money the bars got. I sat where you sit. I face what you're facing. Some decisions are small, some are big, and a very few change our future and make it a better place. It's time to do what's right for the community as a whole, not just continue to take care of a few. Vote yes.
Okay. Is that the last speaker?
And that's my kinder speaker. Yeah.
We've discussed this quite a bit. So 11 years, I guess, we've discussed it since I've been around, or 12 or more, 13. But anyway, do we have any other comments? I hear Commissioner Henry calling for a vote.
I have a few.
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, I do not like the time that we're doing this because right now is Bike Week. All the business owners right now, all their staff are getting ready for Bike Week. So that's why you do not see anyone here except a few owners. A few owners have been ever since the 80s down in Seabreeze, if you don't mind me calling out, Razzles, Oyster Pub. I was once in my 20s, my 30s. I have five kids. They're in their 30s now. We are a college town, six colleges, I think you have said. And yes, I don't go out anymore, but I do remember going out in my 20s and 30s. Now I'm at home at Friday night, is a good night, with Netflix, a glass of wine, or babysitting grandkids. But I do remember those days. And I do not, and someone said something about a band. My husband's been an entertainer all his life. Yes, he does not like playing to 3:00 anymore, but he did when he was younger. And he still actually plays. He'll be on Main Street during Bike Week and my son-in-law. I just don't, I support the businesses. I do not like restricting businesses, and especially right now after we went through COVID, and now we're telling them they have to close the bars earlier. And I do know how much money you make in that extra hour. I was in the industry back in the 80s and 90s, early 90s. So I do know you make a lot of money because those staff workers that do work in other cities, that last hour, they want to relax when they go home. Then I've heard about fights, and I do remember the Silver Bucket. You said you used to attend the Silver Bucket. I did too, but I'm older now. I don't attend the Silver Bucket anymore. But we have to think about when we were in our 20s and 30s. And I have talked to some of the bar owners. That last hour, they told me they're going to lose 20% of their revenue. And now we're going to punish the Main Street and the other bars because of Seabreeze. They have said they wanted extra detail, and they would pay for detail. And there's fights everywhere. And I can tell you regarding kids, you can close that bar at 2:00. They're just going to take it somewhere else and have a party. And then another, which your guys are saying crime. There's crime, going to be crime wherever they take it. And then for another thing, you know what's really funny? No one has missed this point. And tell me what 30 minutes is going to do about crime. 30 minutes. Because we originally closed at 2:30. They had to stop serving out by 3:00. Now we're saying they can serve up to 2:00. You're not going to get everybody out of that bar at 2:00. So you're actually looking at 30 minutes. Tell me how much crime you're going to solve. I mean, do you get what I'm saying? 30 minutes? What is that? We're just putting more restrictions on our small businesses. And I am not for putting restrictions on businesses. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay. Do we have any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
Well, you all know that I was sitting down and I was relaxing, and I started thinking about the bar closing. And I took pen to paper and started doing a little bit of thinking and scribbling, and this is what I came up with. You know our Daytona Beach advertising motto recently and maybe still is, wide-open fun. Unfortunately, many people have taken to heart and think that this means exactly what it states, that anything goes and they can create any havoc that they want to because Daytona Beach's motto is wide-open fun, which means to me that like the old bar saloon days of years ago when anything goes and there was a little law enforcement in those towns. Anyhow, it's not the bars that are causing the problem. Bars must maintain a lawful business if they want to stay in business. And if they choose not to, then it's up, then it will be up to the beverage department or the, the powers that be that they can either fine you, take away your license. If it's a COP, you could lose hundreds of thousands of dollars. And because that's what it's worth today. And or else the beverage department can close you either temporarily or permanently and take away that license. And for that reason, bar owners are very conscientious of what goes on in their bars. Bar owners really do not have control of what goes on outside of their bars. Like you in your home do not have control of what goes on in the streets, in your streets. So if bars have to close early, it ain't going to make a damn bit of difference because this half hour either earlier or later, it's going to be anyhow, instead of having the problems at 3:00, you're going to have the problems at 2:00 and probably even more because normally, if it's late earlier, if it's later, the people are tired. They're going to go home. They're going to go to bed. If it's earlier, people are still in a party mood, and they're still going to party on, and they're going to go look for someplace to party on or to get into trouble, unfortunately. Normally, if the bar owner, if the bar is closed later, the people are tired. They want to go to sleep. They don't want to go on. They want to go home. And everybody's heard the old song, "All the girls look prettier at closing time." Well, if that is true, at 3:00, they're ready to go home and go to sleep. We're talking about statistics concerning violence in Daytona Beach, and they're completely misleading and just don't jive because they're based on our steady residents here. Now, if they say there's so much crime per 100,000 people, Daytona Beach only has about 72,000 people. They don't realize that at certain times of the year, we swell up our population by 300,000 to 400,000. And they don't consider that is, that's why the statistics are wrong, even though they might sound like. We all know that as a tourist town, our populations increase and sometimes as much as five and a half times. This does not give a true number of the crimes per our normal population, and it's a joke. If we are going to be a leading tourist town in the nation, which we are and growing, we need to be more accommodating for our merchants and for our tourists and do what is right instead of complaining. It's my point of view, and I believe that, especially the idea of closing at 2:00. I remember being young, you're not going to go home to sleep at 2:00. Uh-uh. You're going to look to place to party on. And unfortunately, that's probably going to be in the streets.
I want to agree with you because the young ones, they don't go out till around 10:30, 11:00 o'clock. And then one other thing I didn't mention, those bars, those bars, did I speak to you? No. Okay. And those bars, bars that stay open, we have other businesses around, just not bars that stay open. They cater to those people, so they stay open extra, like the pizza places and everything that's around there. And actually, Oyster Pub actually serves food.
So as I mentioned before, this issue is not just about the bar closing at 2:00 or 3:00. It's about what happens after the fact, as we've all said. I'm hoping that we are working on a plan that works in tandem with whatever we decide this evening. So do we have something like that in place? And it really, it's disheartening when we have businesses who are saying we're willing to work with the city, but we don't have enough staff to do it, and that's on our side. And they're not unwilling, I've spoken with them, to put in their own funding as a group to help the effort and support the neighborhood as best they can. It's unfortunate things have gotten to this point. My question becomes, for 12 years, we've been addressing this roughly. I've been commissioned for three, going on four. Why did we not do this before? What, has it ever gone this far before? What was, what was the reason that we didn't do anything? I'm curious as a, you've been here, so I'm just curious.
Commissions have not had the willpower to say that the people who own the bars are, have been more influential over four people. That's just the bottom line. Four people decide, tonight, four people will make a decision, or five. And it's a tough decision. It's really a split decision. It's a split decision. You know, nobody feels as though this is a perfect decision, no matter what you decide. But each time, the arguments were similar to what they are tonight. And things change.
So do we have a plan? Do we have a surveillance plan? Are we still planning on putting a substation in that particular area? Do we have anything like that going on right now? Do we have anything we can do with cameras, anything like that, to support this effort? Mr. Manager, do you have anything going on? Any plan?
The commission is well aware that we're working to put a substation in that area.
Mm-hmm. And that's about it. Yeah. Okay. Chief Young? Okay.
Good evening, Commissioner. Mr. Mayor. Commissioner May, thank you for the question. So with regards to the Seabreeze area and the issues, I'm going to answer your question, but I also want to just kind of highlight a few other things before I answer your question. With regards to the unruly behavior and the crime, I've been polling my night shift supervisors and, you know, myself, Captain Lee and others have been out, and we've been kind of watching what's going on as we, as we do. And I think one thing we have to keep in focus in mind is the perception from social media. As far as the unruly behavior and the fights that occur out there, these fights have been occurring for the 20 years that I've worked here, but we haven't always seen it because we haven't always been dealing with social media sites such as What's Shady in Daytona. So something changed with social media to where now when a fight breaks out, everyone that's not involved in the fight rushes to grab their phone so that they can be the first to record that fight and post that on social media. So that adds to that perception that, oh, my God, every weekend, there's huge brawls going on down there in the Seabreeze area. Is it an issue? Absolutely. But my point is, this isn't anything new. This is something that we've been dealing with for the 20 years that I've been in service with the city. Now, do we have things that we're putting in place to work on this? Absolutely. You've mentioned the substation. So the most recent correspondence in reference to the substation is that we finally got to the final draft, and it should be being prepared for first reading as far as that substation. So I can't give a definitive timeline for when that, you know, will be, will be ready, but I'm hoping by, hopefully by the end of the summer. And that substation is going to go right there on the northeast corner of Glenview and Grandview. So I feel like with that extra presence up there in that Seabreeze area, that should go a long way to deter a lot of what's going on. Yes, we're dealing with staffing issues right now. So I got cops that are running from one end of, one end of the city to the other, but they know as bar closing hour approaches, they have to all kind of, you know, prioritize and shift into that area to avoid what goes on during bar closing. Captain Lee was assigned a project, and I'm going to let him come up in a few minutes and discuss some of those things that you, that you mentioned, just as far as lighting, surveillance systems, and a trespass system that we'd like to put in place that we think if we can get all the businesses on the same page, will be very, very effective as far as reducing the amount of crime that occurs during that time. Also, something else that I'm doing a lot of research on and we're already discussing because like Karyakis and others have already mentioned, they're having a hard time filling the details for the bars. The rate is $40 an hour citywide, regardless of the location, for a police detail. I've reached out to other chiefs that have similar issues in bar areas, and what they do is they offer those vendors an option to pay more to ensure that the officers will be willing to work that detail. Because what happens is when they're doing their job, when they're forced to take someone to the ground, when they're forced to tase someone, they don't want to deal with the scrutiny and the criticism that comes after when they're posted all over social media. So that's what they take into consideration when they're signing up to work these details. So Captain Lee's going to discuss more of the plan, but the onus is also on the bars to kind of help us out as far as who they're allowing in their bars. Because a lot of these, a lot of these folks that are causing the problems, they're repeat offenders. They're constantly coming back. So I think if we start tracking that and we put a system in place where we can trespass these folks, I think we'll also, we'll see a decline there. But I agree with you, the additional resources down there, I think more presence down there would go a long way. I think, you know, once my substation is in place, the goal is to have them, have them right there on scene, and I think it will go a long way to reduce a lot of what we have going on down there. But I'm going to let Captain Lee come up and kind of go into a little further detail as far as the, as far as the plan.
... really relates to message because people have the, they have an awareness that, I'm sorry. They have, there needs to be an awareness that these are officers who are not on the clock. So we are staff for the road, but these are officers who are not on the clock that have to be willing to take these details.
Right. These, so just for clarification, when we talk about filling details, we're talking about officers who are off duty. They've already- They've already worked their shift, they've already worked their 12-hour rotation, and now we're asking them, are you willing to come in on your night off and sit in front of Razzles and 509 and the other bars for three, four hours a night, and then, you know, ensure that there's no issues? And we've reached a point to where a lot of these guys and girls, they value their time off. When they're off, they want to be off.
And they don't want, they don't want to be there either. They pick these details up last.
Exactly. That's correct.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Scott Lee, Police Captain with the City of Daytona Beach. As the chief was discussing, you know, I'm going to just cover a couple of things that I think that we've discussed as a group that would be things that would help to improve the area. These are items that are not just things that, you know, I came up with, this is a kind of collective list of things that people have kind of tossed around as ideas. These, you know, some of, in fact, I think some of the people here have brought up some of these issues too. The simple things that can be done up here to help with the, the area and improve the area are removal of, of the vehicles on the roadside parking. So reducing those areas and that parking in the 500, 600 block at least, and establishing like a pickup area for, you know, share parking, or me, share, like Lyft and Uber and cabs down in the 400 block, that would be something that would assist because it would open the area, create natural surveillance for law enforcement so they can see fights that might be occurring, or see problems that are starting before they get to the point of being a fight, so that they can intercede early and stop those things from, before they occur. Increasing the lighting in certain areas, and not just on Seabreeze, I think we, the conversation commonly gets focused right on the corridor of Seabreeze, and there's so much more to the area that needs to be addressed from a law enforcement standpoint. Those, those little roads that offshoot from Seabreeze need to be addressed too. The lighting would need to be improved in those areas at night. It should be really well lit in that, in the evening so that officers can see down those areas as far as they possibly can to be able to see what's going on. Again, so they can, they can see things early, so they can engage them early before they get out of control. Mainly focusing on Grandview, Wild Olive, both north and south of Seabreeze. Even Oleander is a good one too, that would need, that probably have improvements in lighting. In and around that bank area in the 400 block, there's, would need to be some improvements in lighting as well. A camera plan would need to be looked at in that area. There is a, a pretty good area that would need to be covered with cameras. That would help improve things for us as far as solvability of crime. Solvability of crime helps to reduce crime over time because, you know, people become aware that cameras are there, they tend to be discouraged to be in the area and committing crimes where they know cameras are and where they're going to be commonly caught. It also allows us as law enforcement to be able to better monitor those areas. So, for instance, supervisors will be able to still work on their supervisory work in their offices while also monitoring those cameras and calling out things to officers to be able to respond in for those. Using that type of technology also allows us to capitalize on the use of technology such as AI analytical software or facial recognition software in the future to be able to address or identify problems early on. The chief mentioned that we talked about a unified like ID swipe system, which would be, could be commonly used, and if we could get all the bars on the same system in that region, that would be a, a system there where they could primarily be using that to make sure that they're scanning for false IDs or underage drinking. So as they're swiping these IDs when people are coming in the bars, that allows them to determine whether it's a, a real ID or not, because when they swipe that, that barcode, they'll be able to tell. But the other benefit of that is too, is that those systems are now built in, in there where you can create a flag where it's not storing data in the system, but it's creating a, like a color-coded flag where it basically says this person's, their entry is barred. So it would allow for somebody, if they created a disturbance or a problem at the property, to be able to be trespassed and to be marked in that system so that a bouncer doesn't have to remember that, and then maybe it's the next, next weekend, it's a different bouncer working the door, they don't know. And that's one of the common problems out there, is somebody might be barred or not allowed in, but the next weekend, it's a totally different staff member working, and they don't know that that person wasn't allowed in. So they end up getting back in. So that would help with that. And, you know, unifying the bars under some type of trespass agreement would help because honestly, what we see is that one person that's causing a problem in one bar, typically, once they get trespassed from that bar, they just move down the road to the next bar, and they're creating the same type of problems down the road. Or they're back, we see the same kind of reoccurring folks commonly, at least for our locals that are, that are coming back and causing the same problems, either monthly or, or throughout the year. The, let's see, sidewalk improvements, going back to the cameras real quick, a benefit that would help us, is to have speakers there. That would give us two benefits, probably as a city during the day. It would help to increase probably connecting those areas through playing music or city announcements, but at night, it would benefit us as police that when we get to that bar close, we could have automated announcements, letting the people know that the bars are closed in the area, and asking people to disperse from the area or move back to their parking, or back to their parked vehicles, or wherever they need to move from that area, which would alleviate some of the, the issues of, of law enforcement having to come up and to address or, or have that verbal encounter with people. And it would just announce to the people and letting know, and letting them know about what was occurring in the area as far as the area being closed or, or starting to close down. And those are, I mean, these are just some of the, the things that we've talked about. There are quite a few other issues that we've, that we've discussed over time, and we could bring back more if you guys wanted to discuss those or, or have some kind of discussion about those in the future. Any questions?
Yeah, I love those ideas. Very creative, very innovative. Have we thought about how effective on those super busy nights drones would be? Yes, it is.
Actually, they are really effective, and we do typically use them on our, especially during our events, we use them during our highest peak times, when we have a lot of people out there. And they're deployed...
Especially for Bike Week. Stand out over me and share.
And we have several of them deployed on, on many of our shifts, so if they have a need for it during a regular, just Saturday, if there's just a high crowd and they need to get over it and see what's going on, they can deploy if they have one available.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for me while I'm here?
So I appreciate the fact that we have a, a plan of some sort that extends beyond just the bar closing hours, right? So then, my next question is, have we ever done a, a process of implementing things a little bit at a time? Have we ever implemented anything, or has it just been A or B? Has it been, we do it in a step-down program over time, we check to see how things go? Anything like that?
Oh, so, so Seabreeze, because I was the district captain before I was assigned over Neighborhood Services, Seabreeze has been kind of a topic or a project that's been kind of periodically worked over the last probably two to three years. So there's been different things that we've applied to the area trying to reduce or assist. And there's been a variety of things that have interfered with that, that as well, like COVID was an example. Like, when there was no really need to address that area during COVID, most of the bars had, had, had not, were not open. There wasn't a lot of issues going on during that period of time. So there are things that we've tried along the way that we've applied to the area, different type of enforcement tactics, different types of strategies to make sure there's consistency among patrol shifts. And those things have met different challenges, and we've had some really good successes with those that worked for periods of time. And then there's some things that we discovered along the way that just didn't work, and then we tried to modify and move forward with those. Now, as far as implementing some of these types of things, I think the biggest hurdle that we would have to overcome as a community is, a lot of the things that we start to move towards are things that we, we're moving towards things that need funding. And then that's where we have to get into a conversation about how do we do that? And, and there's people that have some really creative ideas in the city about how do we come up with that? And there's partnerships that we could probably create and, and come together with the business owners in the area and try to come up with some plan for that. There's also ways that we could come up with some creative ways to do assessments in the areas to be able to do that stuff as well. And I know that there's other staff members that can assist with those types of ideas.
Terrific idea, guys. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
So, I mean, I can only speak to the residents I've spoken to in Zone 3 when I do my walks, and I've been going out quite often and discussing certain topics that have been before us. The residents in, the ones I spoke to in Zone 3, they would support the residents in Zone 2 because the concept was, there's no reason to stay open that late. And then the other side of it was, something I have to say is that the issue was not Main Street. We have a couple of corridors, East ISB, et cetera. That was not some of the primary issues. The issues seemed to be primarily, you know, around the, the Seabreeze corridor, but I thought I would share that anyway. But the residents in, in Zone 3 were, and the, I mean, the, the age of the residents, I think possibly makes a difference also, you know, kind of their perspective at that time. The idea that nothing good happens at a certain time, you know, has come up, but I have been asking the Zone 3 residents, so you know.
I've listened to everything that's been said this evening, and I love some of the ideas that were suggested by the, by the Captain and the Chief this evening. But there's a phrase that, that I use quite often that states, "Membership has its privileges." And it's a membership to have the license to stay open late. And it comes with certain responsibilities to continue that privilege. I like the suggestion that was made by one young man that came up that said, perhaps we should consider revoking the extended hours privilege from those who don't utilize it or, or adhere to it. Particularly when you think about habitual offenders. You know who come to your club? If you open up every weekend, every Friday to Saturday, some of the same people are coming, and if some of those same knuckleheads are the problem people, then you need to either keep them out because they're, they're discrediting your business, or you need to do something. Listening to the presentation by Chief and some of the things that we've said, I also think that we all have a responsibility with what's going on. So I like the, the ideas that were suggested, but I'm also going to still vote for the 2 o'clock. And I think we should put a sunset on it. And what I do like about this is that we're not saying the 2 o'clock 24, I'm sorry, 12 months out of the year. We're, we're still recognizing times that are, are pertinent for them to be open. And, and we've added Jeep, Jeep Week to that list of times. Now, we're the commission, we're the policymakers. So if this doesn't work, or things get better, we can change it. So it doesn't have to be forever. We're the ones that make those decisions. But I think we need to do something. Listening to the residents, I don't live around that kind of behavior. There's some activity that, that takes place near where I live, true enough. But if I were living, my, my neighbor had a party this past Saturday and the Saturday before. And I explained to him that another neighbor came to me and said, I go to work at 4 o'clock in the morning, and they were playing music like they were on a ship or something that the whole neighborhood needed to hear till 3 o'clock in the dang old morning. But because I sleep on the other side of the house, it didn't disturb me. But the way the speakers were going towards north, towards her house, she had one hour to get to work when they stopped that music. So she came and said something to me. So I said something to my neighbor. Now, he wasn't there, he allowed his son to have a party for his wife, friend, girlfriend, somebody, and I guess they just couldn't hear. So I approached my neighbor and explained to him, because he shared with me, they're going to have a party two weeks later, which was this past Saturday. And I said, you don't need to share your music with the entire neighborhood. I've been, you know, approached by a neighbor who's indicated that this was very disturbing, and you need to recognize. So when they had this party Saturday night, it was decent and in order. It was under control. Something was said and something was done. Now, you mean to tell me we've been saying something about this for three years and nothing has been done? Well, to me, tonight is the night to do something. And as I've stated, we are the policymakers. If things get better, we can change it back, and we're offering times in which it can still be 3 o'clock in the morning.
Yep.
Let me say one more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Liquid courage. You know, I tell the girls in every room when I, when I meet freshmen, I say, you know, if you weren't a beauty queen when you came here, you're not one at midnight. Liquid courage will make anybody look good, and it'll make anybody take a chance and an opportunity. You looked at me wrong, and I'm ready to fight. You drank from my glass by mistake, and I'm ready to fight. We need to just be conscientious of these behaviors, and we all have a responsibility. We can't just say, well, the city's going to close us. What are you doing? I like the fact that you're ready to come and talk to us. I like the fact that the police have presented something. I think if we all sit around the table, a better change can be opened. Because Mama used to say, ain't nothing open after midnight but legs. And so for us to be hap...
Mama did say that.
Didn't she say that?
Yes.
So for us to have, to be open at 3 o'clock, they need to find somewhere else to go. Mama used to, see, your mama used to say that too, because we had a curfew and there was a time to be home. And what are you doing at 3 o'clock in the morning? Go home.
Mama said that.
Mama at two.
That's Mother Whit. Let, let me...
Better call him, you know.
Mama said it. She said it. We, we've, we've said a lot, and Commissioner Ree, May asked earlier, I think we first addressed this in 2010, since I was elected, and this was, it was a fourth revote then. Some minor changes were made, and we readdressed it again in 2016 where we made a lot of changes as it related to things that the bars were supposed to do. And, and the reality is that the chief can revoke bar licenses now. He has the right to do that. So that, that was a part of the concession in 2016. So my point is that each time you've made concessions and you get better ideas maybe, when this is brought up, and here tonight, we heard some good ideas from our staff, the people who, who work for us. But what I want us to be cognizant of is this, that after we've looked at all of that, each time we come back, and guess who we call to the stage to talk? The Police Department. The same people that we call over and over and over and over again on those Saturday nights. The same people who do not want these details. They don't want them. And when you watch the video, you see why they don't want them. And you'll see it in just a moment, why if you were a policeman, you wouldn't want to go and work this environment. And it's, you know, it doesn't mean that young people don't have a right to go out and have a good time. And yes, we all were young, but I'm going to be honest with you, when I was 20 years old and there was BCR, it offended my sensibilities at 20, because I knew that it was unreasonable a lot of what I saw. Borderline barbaric. It just was not something that I thought was reasonable. Now, the majority of kids in college can't drink, not by law. 18 to 21. And if you go by what science says, since their frontal lobes don't develop until they're 25, almost none of them should be drinking. Let's just be real, and that's what science says. That, and so when we talk about the decisions that they make, there's a reason that they make poor decisions. The frontal lobe is not completely developed, that's the decision-making mechanism. Now, our police are beat down. But not only are our police beat down, the residents continue to tell you in this same neighborhood, year after year after year, what they see. Now, I'm all for coming back and revisiting this if we voted affirmatively, but I think it should be the rule, should be the rule. And then we revisit it, and if we want to revisit it and change it after a year, then we choose to do that. But what I propose is that we go ahead and, I hope that we would vote in favor of this, but if we don't, then the residents will say what they've said to me all along throughout this process. They've said to me, we've got three people who represent us on the beachside. We've got seven people who represent this commission. At some point in time, somebody has to stand up for the residents of this city. And that's what they keep saying to me, and that's why, for 12 years, I've fought this fight, because I believe that the residents deserve, have a right to be heard. Businesses do not have a right to infringe upon the reputation of Daytona Beach, nor do they have a right to infringe upon the residents of Daytona Beach, all in the name of making a dollar. And, and I furthermore believe that if we invoke this policy tonight, it's going to get better. Daytona Beach is only getting better. This is not going to make anybody a weaker. And you're talking about a few, a handful of businesses tonight that are saying that they're going to be deeply impacted, and I'm not saying that they're not. I'm not there to count their roses or lack thereof. Would you please play the video? I was not going to show this, but this is too contentious for me to deny the residents a right.
[applause][1794.33]
You're the guy, AJ, come on.
Swing, bro, swing. Say something, swing, bro.
You're the guy, AJ!
It's me, it's me. I'm A. J., I know, I'm A. J.
Oh, wait, Charles, what you doing, nigga? What you doing? Charles, what the fuck?
Okay. I've got more to say. Yeah, I know, and I, I didn't, I didn't, I really didn't want to show that, because when I talk about the reputation, I'm sick of it. I'm sick of the reputation. And the fact that we, we're talking tonight about having a substation, the very fact that we have to talk about having a substation, everything that the police said is evidence that we need to roll back the hour. So, uh, let us, if there's no further comments from you all, let's vote, make our decision.
I have one more.
If, if, for some reason, Mr., uh, the young man who's looking for a new mayor, um, I'm not here in two, three years, then you may not have this fight anymore. Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Cantu.
Yeah, that video, was that all in one night?
No, that's not, I don't know, I have no clue.
I was just curious.
I have no clue. It was sent to me by residents. I didn't want to show it, but I think the dialogue has been too contentious for me not to give them that privilege of being heard in that way. The residents wanted to be heard because that was what they have shared, and they, you know, I didn't want to deny that. I don't know. I know that that's what they feel, that they experience on all too frequently of an occasion. So, okay, all right. We'll have a roll call vote.
Mayor, if I may first, there was a motion, it's been so long ago.
Yes, there was.
There is a blank in the ordinance for the effective date, and we need some direction as to when you'd like this to become effective, assuming it's passed.
I'd like, like to recommend, um, maybe the beginning of our fiscal year, October 1.
That's fine. It doesn't change by Oktoberfest, they have a, they have a exemption.
Right, it's one of the exemptions.
Yeah.
Why, why so long? Why October?
You want it shorter?
Pardon me? Pardon me?
You want it shorter?
No, well, I'd like us to get through Bike Week, because it's such a short term right here.
Bike Week is one of the exemptions.
But I thought it was October. October takes us like all three some-
There are both exemptions, Bike Week and Oktoberfest.
Remember, you added Jeep Week, you don't have exemptions?
I, I understand that. My issue is just the residents have waited for so long, and then to have to wait a few more months. I mean, I recognize the businesses have to do their thing.
I'm good with doing it early in, in October.
I don't want to-
It's still June 1, is that okay? June 1.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Next one, whoever made the motion, would they be willing to amend their motion?
It was Commissioner May was the motion, and Commissioner Reed was the second.
Mm-hmm. I'd like to amend my motion to the point that we initiate this June 1.
I amend my second.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second. amended motion, amended second. Okay, we have a roll call.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantu.
No.
Commissioner Henry.
No.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Traeger.
No.
Commissioner Strickland.
Yes.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Yes. Motion carries.
Four to three.
Four to three. Split.
Okay. What day is it? Gonna move on to item 9B, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Second Amendment to Clyde Morris Boulevard Industrial PD Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the Clyde Morris Boulevard Industrial Plan District Agreement to modify landscape buffer requirements, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Second Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Reed. We have any speakers?
I just have Jessica Gao here for any questions.
Um, no question for Ms. Gao. All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Okay. We'll now move on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item number 10A is Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Framework Plan Development Redevelopment Rezoning. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezon 3.5 plus or minus acres of property located, located generally at the southwest corner of Beach Street and Michigan Avenue, directly west of Riverfront Park and Halifax River, from RDD-4 Redevelopment Downtown Riverfront Mixed Use to PDRD Plan Development Redevelopment, and approving the Framework Downtown Plan Development Agreement to allow construction of a multifamily residential complex subject to certain conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. So move.
Uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner May. Do we have any questions? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
The public hearing is set for March 16. Moving on to item 10B, it is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Lotus of Daytona PD Extension. This is a resolution. A resolution extending development deadlines established by the Lotus of Daytona Plan District Agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. So move. Second.
Motion from Commissioner Henry and a second from Commissioner Cantu. No questions, no speakers, all those in favor.
I have a question, I have a question.
You got one?
There's a speaker.
Okay.
Well, I do have Glenn Storey here on behalf of the applicant.
All right, go ahead, kid.
How long, how long was the initial agreement? You want to extend it for four years, how long was the initial agreement?
I think the initial agreement, I think it was five.
Five?
Yeah. So the, and, and I don't know if you've seen this, but the bottom line is, we had this thing going. We had the site plan approved as of 2019, uh, and then bang, COVID had, the pandemic hit, and so nothing was going for hotels, as you can imagine.
So only four years?
I think, yeah, because we're ready to go at this point, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you are.
We're in the process.
We are ready to go. But we can't go now until you tell us to go.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, let's go. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other questions? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
We'll now move on to item 10C, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Lotus of Daytona PD Extension. This is a resolution. A resolution extending development deadlines established by the Lotus of Daytona Plan District Agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. So move. Second.
Motion from Commissioner Henry and a second from Commissioner Cantu. No questions, no speakers, all those in favor.
I have a question, I have a question.
You got one?
There's a speaker.
Okay.
Well, I do have Glenn Storey here on behalf of the applicant.
All right, go ahead, kid.
How long, how long was the initial agreement? You want to extend it for four years, how long was the initial agreement?
I think the initial agreement, I think it was five.
Five?
Yeah. So the, and, and I don't know if you've seen this, but the bottom line is, we had this thing going. We had the site plan approved as of 2019, uh, and then bang, COVID had, the pandemic hit, and so nothing was going for hotels, as you can imagine.
So only four years?
I think, yeah, because we're ready to go at this point, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you are.
We're in the process.
We are ready to go. But we can't go now until you tell us to go.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, let's go. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other questions? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Okay.
All right, good to see you guys.
We'll now move on to item 10C, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Cornerstone Exchange, Exchange PD Extension. This is a resolution. A resolution extending development deadlines established by the Cornerstone Exchange Plan District Agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Question.
Yes, sir, question, my bad.
How long was the initial agreement?
It's the developer here. I, I can answer it from the PD, but-
Yeah, I think, yeah.
You've got it, Dennis.
Dennis Morzek, planning director with the city. Uh, we do have the developer, uh, back here to answer any questions, but according to the original PD agreement, there was a couple of tiered, um, tiered, um, completion dates. Uh, the final one being that the construction of all other phases must be substantially complete within 20 years of the initial approval of the agreement. Uh, the first phase needed to be completed within eight years.
So we had 20 years to start with, and now it's another 10?
Well, it was, it was 20 years to be completed for the entire project. The first deadline would have been to submit all construction, let's see here.
Permits in five years.
Permits within five. That would have been the first deadline. If they didn't meet that first deadline, then everything else just, uh, would go away. So they would, they would not be in, uh, the, uh, the PD agreement would no longer be valid.
So, explain that to me again, exactly where are we? We gave 20 years, and now they want another 10. That's 30 years to get a project done.
No, the, um, well, the, the way the, uh, the way the deadlines are, uh, there's a tiered deadlines. There's the, the deadline to submit for your permit applications, uh, there's the deadlines to submit for the first phase, and then for the second phase.
Did that, were those met?
Uh, no, the, I believe the first, first one was not met. It was a five, five to submit your permit application, and that wasn't met. So that invalidated the PD agreement and had them, have them come back to get the PD back up and running.
How long has it been since that was initially done?
Uh, this was when it was originally approved?
Yes.
Let's see here, looks like it was signed, actually signed in December of 19, so, yeah, and, and Bob, if you see something different here, I'm looking at it and it says that the, uh, "Application shall be submitted for all construction permits for the development or the first phase of the phase development within five years of approval of the agreement."
That's correct.
Well, it hadn't been five years then.
It hasn't been five years, correct.
So why aren't we asking for 10 more?
Well, the, let's see here, what the actual request is. Uh, the request actually eliminated that 20-year, um, deadline that they had.
Just filing this request eliminated the 20 years.
This, this one does. So if you take a look at your, uh, the memo on page 540, you'll see the strike-through underline of what's being requested.
540.
Yeah, and it looks like I may have missed a, and I didn't see it in there, but it'll give you the strike-through underline. Tell me when you, if you're there. So on the last, on the last item, uh, where you've got the strike-through going through the construction of Phase 1, substantially complete within eight years of the approval of the agreement, uh, construction of all other phases shall be substantially complete within 20 years of the agreement, the, um, what they're requesting is a construction of the entire development shall be substantially complete within 10 years of the initial approval of the agreement.
Okay, so we're doing away with the 20 years.
Doing away with the 20.
Hitting the reset button for 10 years.
Uh, for 10 years, yes. Yes.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
And I don't have any speakers for this item.
No speakers?
Mm-mm.
All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Motion carries, 7-0.
Moving on to our final item, which is 10D, the City Manager's Office City Commission Policy Regarding Economic Incentive Agreements and Request for Confidentiality. This is a resolution. A resolution establishing city commission policy with respect to review and, to review and approval of economic incentive agreements with private businesses seeking to locate or expand in the city that have requested confidentiality pursuant to statute 288.0752A, authorizing and directing the city manager to implement, implement these guidelines and providing an effective date. So move. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Henry, we'll take a second from Commissioner May. Do we have any questions or comments?
And I don't have any speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mr. Strickland?
I want it 14 days, but I'll take the 10.
Don't worry about it.
10 days is good. All right. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0, I almost said 2-0. All right, um, you're first. You, you're first.
Yeah, he is first.
Got to go to the bathroom.
I'm so glad I came. Hey. Oh, hold on.
You want to come back?
Actually, I think we start with Commissioner May for the-
All right, you go last, all right.
All righty.
Same as the city.
All right, so just two main issues for me this evening. Some pressure washing, do we have a plan for Magnolia? Uh, we have more food events taking place on Magnolia Avenue, the truck events are happening weekly, every second week, and the sidewalks are slick. We also have the, um, the farmer's market there every single week, and my question is, um, do we have any pressure washing plan at all? Is that possible to do anything like that? Oh, sorry, is it possible to do anything like that?
Uh, yes, ma'am, this is David Waller, uh, Public Works. Uh, we actually, a cup, two weeks ago, walked that site with our pressure washing group and are gonna add it to our regular cycle, it'll be on the same cycle as Beach Street.
And so how, how often will that be?
Uh, right now, Beach Street is done on a monthly basis.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. Also, I'm going to send some pictures. The person who sent me the pictures asked that they not be mentioned, because I, I said I need some, I, whenever the people give me a complaint, I say, "Send me pictures, I want to see it," right? And this actually takes place on Magnolia, and the picture is, I think I may have sent this one to the city manager. It's a picture of a man sleeping on a sidewalk in front of the bank, even though there is a trespassing sign there. And then I have other pictures that show people pulling up with cars, uh, some, some transient people coming up to the cars, and then being given bags of food right at the intersection of Magnolia and Bridgewood, in that one block. Magnolia, so it's on Magnolia, Bridgewood, Palmetto, there's a little area right in there. My question is, how do we feel about this practice? And this has happened before, and for whatever reason, it always happens on Magnolia, I don't know how to explain it. Cars will pull up, and they will hand out sandwiches. One day, I am, and then other people, it's like they're waiting on the corner, they know the car is coming, they know the driver. So one day, I came out of my business, and I asked the person, "What are you doing?" Said, "Feeding." She was doing a portable feeding station. Magnolia. And this is happening, and I have pictures of it, and I have the car, right? My question is, do we have any ordinance right now, and are we opposed to creating something that prohibits cars from stopping and just engaging in this? Because that corner, and that corner on Magnolia, Palmetto area, not, not a good situation there, that's number one. Number two, almost every session, I ask about Bridgewood. Bridgewood, Palmetto, Bridgewood, Palmetto, Bridgewood, North Street, just Bridgewood in general. Are we ready yet, and, you know, it's a discretion of the mayor, the commission, but it's a And, you know, it's a discretion of the mayor, the commission, but it's a constant concern, constant concern. So those are my thoughts. Any feedback on a possible ordinance about cars stopping and just creating, since it's happening at regular intervals? Thoughts?
We have laws as far as blocking traffic and that sort of thing.
Parking, they're in a parking, maybe they're pulled up in the roadway and stopped, people have then run up to the car. I see it right outside my business, right? Or they're waiting on the corner, that's number one. Number two is at the Palmetto-Bridgewood intersection, right in that little block there, they're pulling into a parking spot, so they're not holding up traffic. They're in a parking spot handing out food in blue carrier bags.
I could look into it. We have some rules as far as social services and where they can be provided. I'd like to look into it, I'm not familiar with all the facts, but I will certainly look into the legal options.
And what I'll do is I'll go ahead and forward you those pictures, so that you can take a good look at what is going on there. All righty, thank you.
I'll try to make this quick. There was actually a board meeting for the Daytona Veteran Museum yesterday, and I want to announce the grand opening will be June 4th at 12 o'clock, and the city will be participating, helping to organize this grand opening. What else do I have? Is Jim Morris still here? Of course he is. Okay, so if you can find out, if he's gone. I want to find out where we are for an RFP for the cell phone tower, because I was told that was supposed to be out, I think, January, February, so if we can get an update on that. It's needed, I'm sure. Is he gone?
There's only three of them back there.
Yeah, he's, he's fine.
Okay. Then also, the two properties that I bought with my COVID relief money, that the mayor wanted to use the city property for a park out in LPGA. I would like to see, I think I have around $100,000 left over, so I would like to see for Raynor's Park, if I could start using some of that money and we can start doing a design for that park. Oh, he is here. But I, yeah, I think we are, but I think.
One of the questions, Ms. Morris was.
Because I know you have some plans on there, but I figured I could start getting it going, I have money.
It's drafted, there's a draft lease for the City Attorney's Office, it's not their delay, it's ours.
Wait, what are we talking about?
RFP.
Okay, so we went back.
Yeah, the manager stated the question.
He was probably running back to this meeting, he listens to it on his phone, chief.
I do. The City Attorney's Office has a draft lease to look at, and I think after that, I hope that it's ready. I know we have a new purchasing officer on March 11, that may make a difference as well, we'll see. But anyhow, we've worked on it a lot, we've got to describe a piece of property for it. The city has acquired additional property next door for access, so we'll carve out a piece on that site to be used and go forward from there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, like I said, I think I have like $100,000 still left over for Raynor's Park, so I'd like to start using some of that money, because I was told it'd probably be estimate of $30,000 for a design.
Oh, you got it.
We can start.
Yeah, I was just saying, you know, I've got some ideas, some ideas to help you.
No, I know, you have ideas, no. I would like to go ahead and pay for it so we can.
She wants to use and get it started.
Yes.
She's saying she wants to get it started, is that?
We'll see, we'll see what the process is.
Okay.
I know, you have the city property, and you mentioned it first.
I've got some other ideas that you might want to use that money for, I think they have the money for that, but that's okay, go ahead.
Well, when I, was it you I talked to today, or was it Drew? About, I think it was Drew, that we might not have the money for the design, wasn't figured into it, so that's why I wanted to, it was Drew.
I was just thinking I could help you spend that money in some other areas, but you've got, that's a good one.
But if we do have the money, that's fine, we'll get together on there, okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well.
That's why we're here.
Right here, in front of here, yes. Okay, now the next thing is Drew here, is Drew here?
He's here.
Yes.
I know.
Wake up back there.
Hey, Drew.
Drew Drosko, deputy city manager, fire chief, and very hungry, yes.
Okay. Almost under it.
Yeah.
And I had talked to you earlier, I just want to put it on the record, because we have some residents over in Pelican Bay, with the Pelican Bay extension, really worried about Fire Station 6, and could you explain how it will affect?
For everyone, Fire Station number 6 is located at 2020 Beville Road, which is at the new stubout for the always intended expansion of the industrial complex. Concerns were addressed that would truck vehicle traffic affect our fire department response, and the answer is no. We actually have preemption of that traffic signal, so when we get a call, we hit the button on the road, we get the green and traffic goes with us. If anything, we think it provides a benefit to us, because now we have a new northern route to get to our northern district. So, no, it will not have effect in my assessment.
I would just like that on the record, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And the last thing, I will be calling a public meeting toward the end of March for the Pelican Bay residents along, well, for Pelican Bay residents and along Beville Road, regarding the Pelican Bay extension that was part of the Volusia County master plan and not the city's plan. But we have been trying to get together for the Hillwood PD and see what we could do to help relieve some of the traffic for the residents on Beville Road. So I'll get back with you when we call that meeting, and that's it.
All right, great, great. Commissioner Henry? Commissioner Reed?
Yes, I just, I neglected to ask this question in my secret meeting. Under 8H, when we adopted the Memorial Day Parade, in here, there's a list of other parades, and one in particular is MLK. So are we going to start having an MLK parade?
It just gives us permission to have it.
Okay.
And approve it, put it in parade.
Okay.
The parades are actually put on by a promoter, and we sponsor the parade, the way the resolution set up.
That's right.
All right, because I know what we do now is not a, well, what is done, we don't do, but what's currently being done is not a parade, so I just wanted clarification that we can do a parade.
You should not be having secret meetings.
You were there.
Commissioner.
Sir, I said two, that's only one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And the other is, Mr. Manager, could you on your calendar, please, let's start having those public meetings in Midtown about the funds that are available for business owners?
Say it again?
The public meetings we discussed for business owners?
Yeah.
It's on?
No, he just flashed me, we will be getting scheduling meetings.
Okay, very good, thank you. I'm through, Mr. Mayor.
What's that, I don't understand what that, what that is.
They don't understand the funds that are available, like we've lifted that grant, that matching grant thing, you know, what is available for them, just trying to help them, help themselves. So we just want to have a public meeting so they understand what's available. Mm-hmm.
Very good. Commissioner Traeger?
Is it possible for us to put a tarp over that hole at City Island Rec to keep it from getting even worse?
That's true.
I mean, a simple, simple little thing.
Tarp it down, okay.
Also, we can do that, but I think we also have a meeting next week with the Historical Society, they're having a meeting that we'll be in attendance at.
Okay, but can you get that tarp up there ASAP?
Yes, David Waller gave me a thumbs up, so he'll cover that portion very quickly.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, Strickler?
When you said "will be in attendance next week,"
It's not for you all.
I just asked for clarification.
Need staff.
I think I'm going to make a presentation to the historical board before we bring something back to you all and represent that one.
So, we can't be there to make sure you do a good job, is that what you're saying?
I always.
Can go.
You can go. You can watch it, it is actually online.
Oh, that's something I want to ask you.
Historic is.
Oh, it's not online?
My topics too, good.
Can, in the future, since we have somebody in the room from, like those guys back there, when we have workshops in the future, can we either do them live or at least record them and put them up on the website? Because, let me tell you, I'm going to divert those phone calls to your house, to your phone in your pocket, if we can't do that, because they wearing me out about it.
Okay, I, we can, we can, we have to establish a policy, that was actually one of my topics. So, if we establish the policy and that's what we want, but, I would say that there are times that we don't want to do that if we're in a place that we want to just have a meeting somewhere that's, that can't be recorded. But if, I think the policy should be that every time that it's in a place that it can be recorded, we should do it.
I'm on board with that.
But I don't think that, you know, if you choose to say you're going to meet off-site, that we should force the staff to then have to try to record that.
Oh, absolutely.
Because, you know, people have a right still to come to meetings.
Sure.
They still have, they still have, you know, we're not telling them they can't come.
That's right.
There may be one you want to have somewhere that you can't record, for whatever reason, even when we have a workshop, I mean, the strategic planning process, all sorts of things. But when possible, I think we should have a policy that says that they should be visible to the public.
And I do want to say that it is a scheduling opportunity for us as well, so we will do what you say, but don't think that just because we're in a room, that it can be broadcast, because we schedule the staff based on the meetings that you all have. What, and if we have, like, last meeting, we had a meeting up here for, what board was that, that we had?
The workshop that we had.
Last week, we had a meeting up here, so we had staff up here during a meeting, and then we also had a meeting downstairs. So we will work to coordinate, if that's the policy direction you give, we do have sometimes two meetings at the same time.
Well, let's make sure, then what I would say to that is, if you all agree, that the commission business should take preeminence over other meetings.
Oh, yeah.
You know, because that's the meeting that is of first order of business for the.
One other question. We talked about a retreat, then I think it got canceled, or what's the plan on that?
We're going to give you all some more dates soon.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, that's good. Okay, again, I've mentioned that Dr. Bethune's statue, the two unveiling dates, July 14th and August 18th. And I would be remiss tonight, since we've talked a lot about history and Dr. Bethune's legacy, to say that we have a great history in Daytona Beach. Our city has a lot of great history. And one of the projects that I hope to work on moving forward is, and I don't know how this will be done, but it will be something that I will work on as mayor, but I think we, it's time for our city to have an African-American museum. I was talking to my wife on this weekend, and I said, "I think it's time, we have too much, too much history." And I think it should be at a location that's in Midtown. I've already made a few calls to some people that I think would be instrumental in helping us to establish that. And to that point, I hope, are we, how are we coming on the app for the historic, what's, what did we call that? The Black Heritage Trail? This, and also the Arts District, all of those things, I know it takes time, but, you know, soon it'll be a year, and we want to start to see some movement on those things.
I can't give you the app, well.
No need.
She actually, well, she keeps, gives us information for our meetings, I'll give update on the app. However, the murals that have been approved and the Art District stuff, the property owners have, we've gone through the meetings and they have the contract, and I think Ben and Bob, they've been going through the process. I don't know if they gave them to Michelle to get with the contractors to get approval. Ben, do you know for the use, for the facilities, for the three murals that were already approved? Did you hear what I was saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
We drafted a form agreement.
Okay.
For the staff to comply to the three property.
Yeah, and I think Michelle is going to be, she's reached out to them, but we'll have a follow-up on the app, and I'll have at the next meeting a follow-up, if the property owners have signed the agreements for the murals to be placed and the money has been set aside for it.
Okay, but I'm referring to also the overall Arts District and us pushing forward.
Yeah, there's a committee that's coming together for that, so I'll just have an update at the next commission meeting, make it even easier.
All right, good, all right. But, on that other point of the history, Mr. Traeger, I'll be calling to talk to you a little bit, have some discussion, I don't know if it's a committee yet, but I will probably bring together about eight or 10 people to start that, because I think that people who have worked in this area should be, help us, you know, and then we got to have a driving wheel behind, because it's going to take, you know, a board, I really want this to be something that's special. Because when you think about the history of Daytona Beach, just look around, I mean, I'm talking about the African-American history. It's, it's pretty impressive, pretty, pretty impressive. It's, you know, something that we, it's something that we need to document and highlight as a community. And having come off the heels of Dr. Bethune has sort of ignited me in this area. So that's it for me, and Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
Mr. Mayor, may I piggyback on that? I just, well, I've been saying that for a while, but I just mentioned it to the manager in my secret meeting, that I wanted to have a Black History Museum, oh, no secret, don't even say that. You got to know what the history behind the secret meeting.
Yeah, he doesn't know.
You don't know the history. But I want you to know that my first three years of elementary school were segregated. I have my report card for the fourth grade that told me where I was to go for integration. The staple may be rusty, but it told me where I was to go. Campbell, well, the Dickerson Center was my mother's high school, but it was my elementary. And we, about maybe seven or eight years ago, we celebrated all those people that were still living, that helped us, from the janitor to the cook, to any teachers that were still living, because it was only like eight years that the Dickerson Center was an elementary school, because it was a high school previously. That's where the black kids went, and then I went as an elementary school. And so I am so glad to hear you say that, in fact, I had thought about Shiloh Church. I don't know what condition it's in, the two-story older church, you know, they've got the auditorium upstairs, they've got that big space in the basement, I didn't know if something could be a theater, amphitheater for children to perform, because the church is set up like a theater with the pulpit and the stage, and the museum on the bottom, you know, just to attract or whatever. But I am so in support of that, I am so glad to hear you say that.
Okay.
I concur, yes, sir.
All right.
Is that something that we could possibly, as a contributing factor, dealing with the historic trail and the museum, et cetera, things to bring attention to the MLK area, right, that street? Is that something we can use our Cares money for at some level, if we wanted to do something?
I don't know, Drew, if you would look into that and let us know, because I really want it to be something, something special.
Yes.
I do, I want it to be something special, but I also believe that it's not for us to run.
Oh, yeah.
And so that body, to manage it, is not, doesn't exist, in my mind, that I know of. But, let Drew look into that.
Yeah.
And then give us a.
I would have an interest in something like that, if there's something that is a festival, a trail, or something along those lines that we can use money for, I would be interested
in that. It's going to enhance the trail, we have a trail, it will enhance the trail. And we've added a 14th location to the trail, the Lucas House, we just put a historical marker there.
I wasn't there, but I.
Yes, we know, but we held it down for you. We held it down for you.
Okay.
Yes, sir, you know that.
Okay, anything else?
Just, just two items, as you talked about Dr. Bethune, this afternoon, had a Zoom call with the principal of Bethune Academy, which is a magnet school in Polk County, in Hayne City, that's named after Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune, and she was doing a presentation on it with the start of Women's History Month, and had me talking about being the former city manager there in the school, so they have pictures of Dr. Bethune all at the school, but many of the kids don't know. But yes, there is a Bethune Academy named after Dr. Bethune, which is one of the best schools in Polk County, which is a STEM Academy program, and so, they're going to be coming up here. But one of the good things, as you all talk about, an African-American museum, and I want to share tonight with you all, that the city has secured a $1 million contribution towards Daisy Stockton Park in African-American history that we will be using to put in that corridor down by Daisy Stockton Park. So we received a $1 million grant that the, that the Leisure Services staff worked on, Keith and Betty and Vince and Beth Limke, our grant writers, so we were in the top, then we were like 38, 30, number 38, and it was, I mean, it was major cities that applied for these federal funds, and the city of Daytona Beach. Yeah, yeah, so it's $1 million that will go, and we'll be bringing some ideas about how we can do some trails and put some historical markers in that area and give some insight. But I want to commend the Leisure Services staff and our grant writer for securing that $1 million.
Also, I think you should acknowledge that the Bethune House received some funds, I don't know what the amount was, but it was a substantial amount to restore the Dr. Bethune's home, and that was of great importance to the city. Yes, so did I, good job. Okay, anyone else? I also would like to turn it over to Bob at this moment in time for an update on our interest in short-term rentals.
Right, thank you, Mayor. I'll try to keep this brief, given the hour. But at the last meeting, you recall, the mayor discussed an initiative where we would expand the city, that is, would expand allowances for short-term rentals into the Surfside area, yet to be defined exactly what that would include, but that was the concept that was discussed. I believe Commissioner Traeger and others had some concerns about how that might move forward in light of the preemption under state law. So the mayor suggested that perhaps we would get an outside opinion from another attorney. I have given the opinion to this commission, that I feel that the city could defend a challenge to an ordinance which simply expanded the use of short-term rentals and did not attempt to regulate the. and did not attempt to, uh, regulate the duration or frequency or prohibit. And that's the language from the, uh, the statutory preemption. I have an option for you, though. Instead of going out for another legal opinion, uh, I would suggest that, uh, maybe we go to the Attorney General for an opinion. As you might be aware, the Attorney General will give, um, formal and informal opinions based on a request from commissions and, and other public officers. It requires you to, to adopt a resolution. It requires, uh, us to present a memo of law, is, is along with all of our other research presented to the city commission. And I'm told from talking to the AG's office that they will give us an opinion within three to six months of the request. What I'd like to do is read to you the draft question and bring back to you at the next meeting with your approval, permission or authority to make a formal request to the Attorney General. So here's the question that I would propose. May the city of Daytona Beach amend its land development code consistent with Section 509.0327B Florida statutes to allow vacation rentals in a zoning district where vacation rentals are not presently permitted? And the amendment does not have the effect of regulating the duration or frequency of vacation rentals? So that would be the proposed question. The actual amendment that would be, that would be required in your code would be simply to change, um, the tables to allow what we call other accommodations or vacation rentals in certain districts within that Surfside area.
Okay. Uh, yes, sir.
I got a question. Does that, does that come with, with some type of guarantee that it will not spread citywide?
So the question you're asking is whether or not by adopting the ordinance, we would lose our grandfathered status under the preemption.
Sort of, yeah.
So the way the preemption works is, is it prohibits, um, cities from regulating short-term rentals, uh, to that degree. But it also grandfathers regulations adopted prior to June 2011. So in my opinion, at least, if we were to adopt an ordinance which should expand the use, that would be the subject to the preemption if, or that would be subject to be, uh, voided if challenged. And, and that's what we would defend against. In my opinion, at least, I don't think it subjects your entire regulatory scheme to being tossed out. But that can, we can add that into the AGO's questioning if you'd like. We can have a secondary question to address that.
Well, i- if you, if you make a residential, one section of a residential neighborhood, change it to that, what's gonna keep people from other neighborhoods that would like it in their neighborhood from challenging that, challenging that in court? Even if it's just one or two people, challenge it in court, it opens up that whole neighborhood where most of the neighbors don't want that. How's, is that gonna protect us from that happening?
Right. So that, that's very similar to the lawsuit, which we've already defended. And one thing I've said consistently is we're, you know, it's very possible they could sue you anytime you regulate in this area. We were sued essentially on those grounds. We had homeowners that sued us who were in areas where, uh, they were prohibited from renting. They were renting anyway. And, uh, when we re-adopted our code, they call it the Clarion Code. When we did the general re-adoption of the code, they claimed that voided the entire regulatory scheme. And, and they lost that. It was taken up on appeal, and we won on appeal. So I feel pretty good about defense of that type of a suit. But again, you know, you never really know what's gonna happen in court, and so I can't guarantee anything. What we get from asking questions to the Attorney General, Attorney General's office, is that those opinions they give have some value in the court system. They are deemed to be persuasive. They're not legal precedent like a case would be, but, but the courts do rely on them in coming to their decision. So that is something that would be part of the case, win or lose, uh, with the AG, that is, for the court to determine. Now, I presume if the court came back and said, uh, no, your, your proposed amendment violates the preemption, that you wouldn't move forward. But you certainly can if you wish, but, uh, but that may, may be a moot issue at that point as to what presidential value that has.
Does everyone follow the rationale behind why we would do this? The one thing that I don't wanna do is to put us in jeopardy of losing our right to regulate this or causing it to expand all across the city. By getting this opinion from the AG, it greatly enhances our standing. And, and it basically says that we've done our due diligence to substantiate essentially what our attorney has told us.
So, do you have a feel as of right now, have they been, um, looking at issues like this in other cities, in other jurisdictions? Do you have an idea which way they're leaning right now?
I, I do.
And what way would that be?
There have been at least two Attorney General opinions in the past, um, which have essentially followed the language of the preemption. Uh, they have read the preemption to be a limited preemption. Your regulation does not violate the preemption, where it does not, uh, impact frequency or duration, and obviously doesn't prohibit, then you are allowed to regulate. So that would be my, my take from the other opinion.
So that would mean that they would be permissive in this situation?
They would be permissive, you say?
Yeah. They, they would allow it.
And I believe that's the direction of the AG. Every case is gonna be fact-specific. There aren't other regulations which are right on point with what you're proposing. In fact, they're a little bit different in, in that the AG ruled that they could not expand to a new area because their regulations limited the duration and frequency. Our regulations don't limit the duration and frequency. They just allow them to exist.
But.
So, so we would be on the other side of that issue, but I think on the same side of the law.
How did you come up with this? I'm curious. Like, how did you come up with, with this approach?
Requesting opinions from the AG is a very common, uh, item.
Okay.
If you go to the AG's, uh, website, you'll, you can search all of their opinions, and you can see, you know, how prevalent that is.
Okay. So, you know, last time we were here, there were thirty-two something or others addresses that were submitted. So right now, um, some of the residents in that area are aware of that, and it's public record. And so they are also trying to find out in their communities, um, especially in the Surfside area, exactly how many of them are opposed to this. And so that number right now is growing. So what I would like to know is, could we have a situation where the residents who live there full-time, who are not owners, but full-time residents, homesteaded dwellers, as was presented here with us? If they would have the opportunity to also present, in let's say a month or so, a list of their signatures of people in that area who ex, who are greater than thirty-two of the hundred and twelve? And would that have any effect on this particular move? Would that make an effort? Would that make an impression?
Everything makes an impression on me.
Then I would ask that we hold off on this until they can, and you can give, say it's a month.
Hold off on the, even the, uh.
So it feels like, and I'm just going to say what I'm thinking at this moment, it feels as though, unless I misunderstood, you already have a pretty good idea of what direction it's gonna go in. And once you know that, then there's no stopping it.
So it's still come back to you for approval. Or denial, either way. I mean, uh, this is just getting a legal opinion from the AG. Once that comes back, the, the ordinance would come back to you for approval.
So how long would the residents in that area have to submit, uh, some documentation saying that they are opposed to this? Especially in that cert, we're not even looking at the other areas, just the area that's directly impacted. How much time would they have to produce documentation?
They have, uh, until we get an ordinance to vote on.
Okay.
Which we're quite a ways from. He's gonna seek an opinion from the Attorney General that could take from three to six months. I don't, if they send it back early, I'd be happy with that, because I don't wanna wait six months. But personally, um, they have a right to.
Okay. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Do you wanna ask a question? I don't, I don't wanna, yeah.
I'm just curious why it would take that long for Ashley Moody to respond back.
Yeah. I mean, it, obviously, she has a team of lawyers. It wouldn't be her directly that would be working on the opinion. I spoke with the attorney that would be assigned it, and that was the timeframe she gave me.
I might be able to help with that.
You gonna call her up?
Yeah.
Please do. See if we can get it faster than that. So that way, you know, you may wanna get those people. Yeah, I know, I know they can write their list down. Okay. Uh, do we have any other questions or comments from the commission? All right. That concludes our regularly scheduled portion. At this time, we will now hear from the citizens of Daytona Beach as it relates to business of the city.
Okay. Our first speaker is Ann Ruby, and on deck is Suzanne Odina.
This has been a Bud Asher kinda meeting.
My legs don't even work. Um, okay. Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. First of all, I would like to invite you on behalf of B&amp;W, all the commissioners, uh, and the mayor, of course, to attend one of our Bike Week barbecues that we do for the first responders. Just come. You can eat. You can help prepare food. You can just, you know, say hello to the first responders who are there. But it is a well-attended event, and we have a lot of volunteers who work there, and it would just be great if you wanted to show up. So your opportunities are Friday, May 4th, Saturday, May 5th.
March?
March. Yeah. See, it is late. March 4th, March 5th, Saturday, March 11th, Friday, and March 12th, Friday, anytime from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and it's at the Harvey Street, um, substation. So, um, that would be great if any, but any or all of you wanted to show up. The other thing is, we are having a B&amp;W meeting tomorrow night, and it's just going to be all the people in attendance who want to share their thoughts about short-term rentals. Because we just thought it might just be good to hear people talking about what they think. The other thing is, on the, um, historic, the Black Heritage Trail, the Black History Trail, I think we do need to add, officially add two stops, and one is the Harold V. Lucas House. Um, because it, it's not officially on the trail right now. We don't have a write-up for it. Yeah, yeah, we have to do that. And then we also should add the Mary McLeod Bethune Hospital, um, that was on MMB. That should be added as a site officially as well. And I love the idea of doing an app for oral history. I think that's great. But the, one of the most important things we're gonna have to do is gather content. Because an app is kind of useless without content. So maybe somewhere we, and I know our EV staff is really overworked. I know that many of them have the willingness and the heart to do it. They don't have the time. But, um, I think, if we could find some funding to hire somebody to go out and collect oral history, I think the sooner we start collecting, the better. Because, um, you know, nobody's getting any younger. Thank you.
I agree with that. Okay.
Our, our next speaker is Suzanne Odina, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Once again, I'm Suzanne Odina. I live at 716 North Wild Olive. I'm speaking once again for the preservation or renovation of the building that's commonly referred to as the Rec Center. The property has serious historic value for Daytona Beach. It was a World War II building, as you all know. As a woman who has served in various capacities, that building is important to me because it was a women's building, uh, and women had not served previously. I understand several of you don't think it's worth saving the building because it has deteriorated so badly. I say most of you that are on this committee or on this commission haven't chosen not to preserve that building. You have had benign neglect. I personally spoke to you years ago about turning it into a replica of a USO with food and entertainment from the various, uh, different eras. I think you owe it to the memory of those who served here and to future generations to right the wrong that you have done. Even if you had to rebuild the building, I think you owe it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Al Burkhart. I don't know if he's still here or not.
Oh, I'm tired. John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue. I know you've already voted on it, but, um, I heard the, the nightclubs and the, um, the bars have four hours to make their money on Friday and Saturday night. I would ask you, what would you do, or if you were at a Super Bowl party, in the last quarter, somebody turns off the television, would you be upset? This is what you did to these people. That's where they make their money, those four hours. It's like having the last quarter cut off. Secondly, if you go down Oak Ridge, and this is gonna come up on like five other streets on the beachside, when you come over that bridge, take a look at those yellow signs. Every single intersection has two huge five-by-five signs that say intersection on both sides of the road. It is overkill. When we go through the new Seabreeze to do A1A, the new Main Street, the new, uh, ISB, Ms. Guy Abbey plans on doing this all over the place. She's planning on eight hundred bollards on our corners. That's a whole heck of a lot of bollards. Those little poles, those cement poles? You're gonna have eighty at an intersection on each corner. It wraps around forever. And our sidewalks are narrow enough to start with. So I want, pay attention to what's coming down the pike. The Rec Center, Paula said, $2 million, a lot of money, all right? You forget that it's free. It won't cost the city a dime. You've heard of Echo? This does fit cultural. It does fit historic. They have $18 million to spend. They have a super fund for $2.5 million. We also are on the river. Find, Florida Island, uh, District. They fund. We also have racing and rec. Although there's not a lot of money in it, but it's in a CRA district. It has that funding as well. It will cost us nothing. We lost the YMCA because of funding, and that could have been free. So ask the people in that neighborhood if they would rather have had an extended Derbyshire Park or what they have now. And lastly, um, the police. Okay, I made a comment earlier that we don't have them. It's not just us. It's everywhere. Every time we turn around, there's not enough cops. I heard that from the, the people that, uh, own the businesses. The residents are saying that. The police are saying that. Is there any way that we can find a way to get more? I know they're hard. They're like hen's eggs. But if Chief Chitwood comes, came up with that, uh, course that he has, maybe Jakari could come. We need more police.
Our next speaker is Al Burkhart, and on deck is Derwin Jackson. Did Al, he missed one? Our next speaker is Derwin Jackson. And on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
Good evening, y'all. Or should I say good morning? My, my name is Derwin Jackson, and I am from Augusta, Georgia. Um, I'm, I'm here in the city of Daytona. Let me, I guess, a quick, just a quick greetings. I bring greetings from New Chris, New Christian Church in Augusta, Georgia. I'm, I was born here in Daytona Beach, went to Highland Elementary, Campbell Middle School, and graduated from Mayland, the best high school that I know of, Mayland High School, uh, in 1983. Right after that, attended Alabama State, came back home, and I graduated from the class, uh, the, um, basic law enforcement class at DBCC. I was a police officer here in Daytona Beach, um, and I found out that that was not where I needed to be. I needed more discipline. So I enlisted in the United States Army, where I was a military police, uh, for 12 years before my, my, before I received a medical, um, discharge. Currently, I, I've been, uh, pastoring churches, but I currently have a ministry called D, DRJ Ministry that fits under the umbrella of New Creation Church. We have, um, we have at least 300 young people in the, in the state of Georgia, not just in Augusta, but in the state of Georgia. These young people come together, um, to utilize their gifts and talents for God's glory. It's our job to build, to build stadiums or to build platforms for them to be able to showcase these gifts and their talents. I've been, we've been doing it now for nine years in Augusta, North Carolina, and South Carolina. Now it's time for me to come home. I need to come home and work with the kids here in Daytona. My wife has challenged me to come home and start a ministry, calling it the, uh, the Daytona Experience. The Daytona Experience. We came down to actually plant. We came down to actually plant that ministry here. We were blindsided by a meeting that we had at Campbell Middle School, and we found out the need in Campbell Middle School. So we kind of put the brakes on planting the Experience Daytona. And we went into Campbell Middle School, where we had been for two weeks mentoring with the same ministry, utilizing the same gifts, the same talents that these young people have. We've been bringing down, my team from Augusta, Georgia, for the past two weekends, and they come down to train in Campbell, to, to, train his kids to utilize their God-given gifts. Now, I come to you today to see if I can receive funding. For the past two weeks, we have, I have been bringing them down with my budget. Now, my budget is way smaller. And I'm asking that if you could, some kind of way, if you could find a way to help us be able to implement this mentoring program in Campbell and this program for the youth in the city of Daytona.
You're a 501(c)(3).
Yes, sir.
Here in the state of Florida?
Not in the state of Florida, state of Georgia, but we're applying to the state of Florida.
Are you here to stay?
Yes. We have, we have partnered with, y'all saw Pastor Fuller. We are partnering with them to actually implement the Experience Daytona at his church.
So you want to implement it at New Mount Sinai? So that's where the kids would come, tell me what they, what they would do.
When they come, we have, we entertain kids anywhere from five to, I know. My, our oldest in our ministry is 33-years-old. And what we do is, we teach them or utilize their gifts in mime, praise dance, ballet. We do drama. We have these kids, we actually do DJing, where we teach the kids how to DJ, actually on a DJ board. These kids have opened up for major artists, gospel artists, like Tassica, Ty Tribbett. They've been on Dr. Bobby Jones, they've received Gospel Choice Awards. So these kids are very gifted, and they came from diverse places, just like Campbell Middle School. I know Pine Heavens, the Soul City, Carolina Village. These kids come from that type of area in Georgia. And we have been very successful with these young people, implementing just their own gifts. We're just utilizing their own gifts and talents. And we're just building the platform for them to be able to showcase it.
Partnership with Pastor Fuller is the use of his facility in bringing people from your training staff
Right.
down here to teach our young people.
Yes, sir. We've already tripled our numbers at Campbell Middle School. So we're, we're already growing. And no doubt, wherever we've been, we've been in schools in Georgia, and our mentoring program, plus the Experience, has prospered with young people. Way back in the YMCA. Amen. Yes, sir. Yes. Amen. Yes, sir.
Ditto.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to see the program, and issues that come to mind, I mean, it sounds like a wonderful program.
Yes, sir.
Right.
In order to meet our public purpose requirements. So it should not be religious-based. I know we, we sponsor religious or church programs, but they're usually programs that aren't part of the ministry. They're educational or mentoring or some other community benefit.
Right, our program in the school system is strictly mentoring. And like I said, we're successfully, in Georgia, approximately three elementaries in Georgia that we've actually implemented our mentoring program.
Would the fact that they're not a 501(c)(3) here affect?
Well, no, 501(c)(3) is a federal designation, so I think that would be fine. I don't, I'm not aware of a separate Florida registration, there may be one.
No, we looked it up, and it wasn't one, so my bishop sent me a copy of ours. So, and he said, and ours is signed by the Georgia Baptist Convention, so we fall under their umbrella.
If you're a 501(c)(3), that's, that's for tax purposes, that's federal. That would be consistent with our requirements.
And we're prepared to partner with the city.
If you could send all the information to my office, your 501(c)(3) status and all that information, they'll need your, the tax ID number and everything. Finance will in order to.
And along with your programming.
Yes.
Whatever that may be.
Yes.
And, but we could bring this back as a Bike Week sponsorship, if you'd like.
I'm about there, too. HBCU.
HBCU, Alabama State, marching on it, I don't get it started, okay, okay.
HBCU moderator for the HBCU Sunday.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, our city manager was the great speaker.
Hey, Kim.
Amen. But we're ready to partner with the city. Any of your events, we are online to do any of the city events.
Sir, my assistant's going to go out and she's going to grab my card and my email address for all the information that you can send to me. And I'll pass on to the finance department, they're the ones that will actually determine.
Once, once you get through all your red tape there, I'm good with 500 of my Bike Week.
Thank you, sir.
As well.
Thank you. Amen.
And I don't, I don't have children, but I would love to attend, so I'll also be sponsoring you.
Thank you.
Maybe I can teach him something.
I heard you have a dance studio.
We will circulate the information, or Tess, you can circulate the programming information. We'll confirm that you comply with our requirements.
Yes, sir.
The commission can just let the manager know what their, what their sponsorship would be, if any, and we will draft a resolution accordingly.
Okay. Thank you all.
Yes, sir, thank you for coming back home, helping our babies.
Greetings, Marjorie Johnson. I also support Mr. Derwin Jackson. He's my daughter's classmate at Mayland High School, and he's a Buccaneer. So, tonight, Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Key Street. I'd just like to say that Midtown is a valuable resource, and our issues need to be addressed, especially by our representatives. And right now, we don't have the Polaregia Missy over in Zone 6. People have been complaining that they can't get a hold of you. And when we came to the meeting, I came at the last meeting, I expressed the fact that that yard there, the 200 block of Key Street, right down the street from my house, is eight feet tall again, right there by that house, the 200 block where Mr. Weems used to live. So we need these places cut, this yard has grown up that high. And then residents, tonight, I heard you pray that you're here representing the people. That you can't be representing anybody if you're not meeting with them, addressing issues that they have concerns about. So you need to be respectable of our taxpayer residents, and you need to be able to meet with them. The last meeting I had with you, you didn't show. And when I got to this podium and dressed, and you said, "Oh, I know how you felt when I didn't show up, let's set up another meeting," and it never happened. So it doesn't matter whether it happens or not, because what we need is someone who's going to represent the people sitting in these seats. And I would like to thank Mr. Ken Strickland, because I was, actually, my honorary commissioner. Because I called him and took him up to the pavilion and showed him all of the bird crap that was there, and I went up there and looked again, and it was full again, and trash was all over the place. It wasn't like that before, when Glenn Ritchie was here. It was kept clean, the people had benches and tables out there, we could have picnics and events. So then we went up, all the way up to Arm, and I looked at the beautiful parks up there, me and Mr. Strickland. And then all of here, and it doesn't look anything. It's because I'm on the library board and served on the Children and Services Board and the Human Services Board. And also this Orange Avenue Bridge, I was put on that committee by Joshua Wagner. I got elected twice, and I was the representative for the city of Daytona. So I would please like for you to be my honorary commissioner, and I thank you so much for going up there. And I still am telling you, you need to go up there and look at that place and clean all that stuff, bird crap off that pavilion, and allow us to have activities up there again, like we did before you got in office. Services is the price you pay for the space you occupy.
Our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is Jenny Nazak.
While he's coming, I'd just like to make a comment. You know, as, as often and as frequent as folks come to city commission meeting, they ought to know that there's a process. And there's a yard behind my house that also needs to be cut. And it hasn't been cut either, because there's a process when it comes to code enforcement. And to say that a yard is, is looking the way it looks, and you're not willing to cut it or wait on the process, then you need to leave it alone.
There is indeed a process. Wow. Frederick Brown, 1508 Kristen Ridge. I'm beginning to wonder if we need to have an ordinance now to limit the timeframe on the meetings here. I think Bud Asher would be proud of what we're doing tonight. And as I, I'm going to remind the mayor, 15 months ago, we kind of joked about it. If y'all had a clock like we do, it might go a little quicker. Okay, you know, I truly see Daytona Beach as a diamond in the rough. I do love the city. I've learned so much from being here. I'm excited about the concept of a African-American museum here. I would like to see it be integrated with some of the other things that we have great in the city. I'm very proud of what's going on and working on the Veterans Museum. I'm very grateful, the fact the city's building, I'm still waiting to see the flagpole get done. You know, and all these things that Daytona's doing, it steps in the right directions, we talked about that. I'm going to go down my laundry list real quick, because I only got a couple minutes. Again, acquiring and retraining public lands is so very, very important. Mayor, of course, you know, you've been there, you know we're anxiously awaiting the Bridgeport Heights property return. But I also mentioned too earlier about the temporal Israel property. And it is, yeah, expensive, or will it be in a few more years, even more expensive? It is an opportunity. The land is in a beautiful location, it ties into a number of things we've done. I can envision some of the other things where it will tie all these opportunities together. So it is something I really wish we would look at, and since we're throwing $3 million around, yeah, well, there you go. It's another opportunity. Quickly, I'll mention again, I really would love to see a city workshop. We could talk about crosswalk safety. I don't want to see any more people getting killed in the end of my street. And there's some serious issues that can be corrected. And I realize all the roads are under different purviews, you've got city, county, and state. But I think if Daytona makes a strong voice and adopts a standard that we'd like to see, I think it would make a disser. As was mentioned, you know, we are a tourist town, we go from 72,000 to half million. And we have to be able to address the needs of those people. I've said many times about we need to do improvements on innovative traffic, I mean, public transportation. And of course, on renewable energy. Again, workshops on this, I have a whole bunch of really great ideas that I'd love to get, to make us the city of the future, not the city of the past. And again, I would like to see, Mr. Mayor, we've talked about this, you know, making a serious commitment to renewable energy, especially with the electric vehicles, which are coming, and to solar, to drive our city.
But I think that as much as I appreciate and listen to you, you also have to remember that we weren't simply elected to just listen to you. That's a part of what we're elected to do. We are elected to talk to one another also, about what goes on. So I don't agree with your assessment that, you know, we talk too much.
Well, no, that was actually your statement 15 months ago, if you remember. I was just kind of bringing that up as a reminder.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. No, it is important we do that, and of course, you have quite a number of other meetings and opportunities. And of course, the managers' meeting, where you get to cover a lot of this. It just seems that sometimes we go into overtime.
Okay.
And I thank him for staying awake over here.
But you're a fine one to talk about going into overtime. I know, but you are, you, go ahead. All right. Jenny?
Our final speaker tonight is Jenny.
Don't. Jenny Nazak, 501 Harvey Avenue. Okay, so obviously, I love our city, I'm very proud of our city. I think probably the biggest thing I'm proud of is that we have a heart. Like, we are, we are a city with heart and spiritual values. And it was brought up earlier that a person not, maybe not here, just, just a citizen, observed someone handing out food to people and became offended by that. And I hear that from different people. I hear that, I'll hear someone say, "Oh, they shouldn't be doing that." And I get the feeling, like, when someone sees somebody laying on the ground, I get the feeling some people are offended in some aesthetic way. Like, really, they're offended aesthetically? We should be, we should be offended, like, that's really horrible. So then, we'll try to, we'll try harder to fix it if we get offended in the core of our soul. I will say, if this city ever illegalizes giving out food, I promise you people, I will organize the biggest act of civil disobedience in the history of Daytona Beach. I will get 10,000 people out there cooking food and handing out food. I have friends who are the best cooks, and they cook food and, and give it to people who are hungry. And that shouldn't be illegal. I know we have problems, I know some things that people do can be messy. But there are some levels that we should not let ourselves sink to. If we get to that level where we're not even allowed to give out food, there's something, there's something wrong with us, you know? Really. And, you know, by the way, I go to the farmer's market every week, and because there aren't any benches to sit on, I often sit on the curb. And I hope somebody, I don't care, I don't care if somebody thinks I'm homeless or not. It's like, well, there's no benches, and I have a butt, just like a homeless person has a butt, and we all need places to sit down. So, thank you all very much, love our city, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
One sec, one sec.
Is that a Derbyshire shirt? Where did you come from?
Derbyshire Place.
Oh, they need to give me one of those.
I thought you, I thought I'd seen you wearing.
No, I'm a Derbyshire person, that's my.
Hey, Jenny? Jenny? Can you hop back there for a second? Before we finish.
I've been asked to come back to the.
It's okay. Just, just as a, just, excuse me, just before we finish, you know, I would very much like to take, I'm the one who said that, it's me, all right? It's not a, it's not just.
I thought you reported that somebody else said that.
No, no, I did, but I'm the one who brought it to commissions. What I'm going to ask you to do is this. I would like for you, sometime with me, to take a moment and meet with this person and have a conversation where you share your thought process with them. And then you take a moment and you listen to what they're experiencing every single day. And it would just be a polite exchange, I think that's a, that's just a thing, right? People have civil discourse in a kind way. But I think it would be eye-opening, because I recall a moment downtown when I think a church had, they were bringing a school bus downtown. They were picking people up who were congregating right downtown, right? And then taking them somewhere else for lunch, but then bringing them right back again. And it was like clockwork, you would see it every single day. And the perception was built about the downtown area. But I think that as a courtesy, if you're interested, I think they would be, they're not angry, they're just saying, "Help me a little bit here, help me out."
And I, and this was, just, this is my citizen speaking time, and that, I hear it all the time from all different people, how offensive this or that is. I hear it all the time. And I'm sure I've heard it from this person, I know business owners, I really sympathize with business owners. with business owners who have people destroying their properties and things like that. But I think there has to be some kind of line that we can draw where we as individuals can, shouldn't, shouldn't be prohibited to like hand out food, that, that, that's all I'm seeing. I'm not gonna, I can't judge another person, and I am really busy. My usual thing is, I'm just trying to make sure that this, that our bio-region stays livable, and that we don't cook in a heat dome. I'm trying to get us resilient so that we don't die, okay? Why don't we? I mean.
You guys can take this up after the meeting.
Yeah, but anyway.
This time is up.
Okay, thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. Good night, Daytona Beach.